If we could all rise for the pledge, please.
Tom, can you lead us through the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces, our first responders, and those brave men and women fighting the fight in Ukraine. Thank you.
My throat's grasping.
Is there anybody on the call?
I'm not sure you're going to get around.
Let's look.
Welcome to join us if you are the meeting host.
Hi, is anybody on the call?
Yes, very good.
Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, we have a public participation. One of you ready?
Yep.
Mr. John Batista.
I'm John Batista. Eighty-eight Trinisky Road, speaking on behalf of myself and the Trinisky Road Bridge Coalition. Dear Mayor Bass and Town Council members, I am speaking this evening because the discussion and possible vote on the permanent bridge replacement for the Trinisky Road Bridge is on your agenda for tonight's meeting. I do not know what proposal may be presented, but I want to encourage you to vote against any two-lane bridge proposal if one is presented. The main reason I encourage you to reject a two-lane bridge proposal is that it would violate the town's scenic road ordinance in multiple ways. As I'm sure you know, Trinisky Road is a designated scenic road and thus covered by the scenic road ordinance. A two-lane bridge proposal would constitute an alteration and widening of the Trinisky Road Bridge. The scenic road ordinance states that no alteration of a scenic road shall be made unless the town council determines such alterations are necessary to maintain the road in good repair and passable condition. Trinisky Road has had a one-lane bridge since 1930 before its closure in the fall of 2020. In all those years, it has remained in good repair and passable condition. Hence, there is no necessity, according to the scenic road ordinance, for a two-lane bridge. Furthermore, the scenic road ordinance states designated highways should never be widened unless the amount of traffic, as determined by a factual study commissioned by the town of New Milford, demands it to keep the road in good repair and in passable condition. To my knowledge, no such factual study has been commissioned by the town of New Milford. Hence, widening the Trinisky Road Bridge to two lanes would be a violation of the scenic road ordinance. The scenic road ordinance also states alterations to a scenic road should not be made as to unnecessarily encourage speed. I believe it is obvious that a two-lane bridge would increase speeds on Trinisky Road, the main concern of all residents on Trinisky Road. The one-lane bridge has served as a kind of choke point intended to slow traffic speeds on at least that portion of Trinisky Road. The scenic road ordinance states that grades shall not be altered unless absolutely essential to keep the road in passable condition. A two-lane bridge would require a change in grade on Trinisky Road, hence another violation of the scenic road ordinance. As a result of the multiple violations of the scenic road ordinance, accepting and passing a two-lane bridge for Trinisky Road would leave the town open to an injunction to prohibit the construction of a two-lane bridge, a very expensive and time-consuming liability for the town. The scenic road ordinance also states that no alteration shall be improved until all potential alternatives have been thoroughly considered. I have learned from the Acro Bridge Corporation that a 25-foot-long, 18-foot-wide, single-lane steel-bammed bridge will cost only about 20% more than the lattice-type temporary bridge for Trinisky Road that was recently approved by the town council. Such a bridge would be more in accord with the recommended river crossing standards than the current 18-foot-wide Trinisky Road Bridge. It is not clear to me what such a bridge would cost, but I do not believe it would be close to the $1.4 million estimate that has been presented to you in the past. I am hopeful it could be done with the existing 600,000 of ARPA funds already designated to the rebuilding of the bridge and certainly it could be done if the previously bonded $600,000 of money for the bridge were returned to the project. In closing, I ask that you consider this and other single-lane bridge proposals for the Trinisky Road Bridge before passing any two-lane bridge proposal. Also, I would add that nowhere in the scenic road ordinance does it state that it may be violated in order to save money. Finally, a two-lane bridge with a change in grade could possibly cause problems for my wife and I, not just personally, but in terms of our businesses and our patients, which are conducted out of our home office. Such an impact is yet another liability the town could face in passing a two-lane bridge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Martin Russo.
Good evening, everybody. Martin Russo, 39 Mist Hill Drive. I just want to just briefly just make a couple of points here. I didn't even prepare anything, so I'll be brief tonight. But, you know, I'm speaking, of course, on behalf of the Farmer and Farm Land Assistance Program and the Green Wave Movement. And the first point I just want to talk about is I touched briefly last time when I was up here about the amazing, you know, work that you did and research that you did and all the programs that you found there the last time. And my point is, is that, you know, that just shows you how big and how far-reaching this movement is towards organic and regenerative farming. Because just in that limited amount of time that you had to research, look at how much, how many organizations that you found just in that time alone. And that, I think, just scratched the surface there. So this movement is big, it's powerful, and it's far-reaching, and it's coming. My second point is that, you know, we've been hearing a lot of talk from farmers about, you know, they don't want to be told how to farm. And, you know, we get that, we understand that. And again, this initiative is not about telling people how to farm. We understand they've been farming this way for a long time, and that's how they farm, and that's how they were taught. But, you know, we're here to educate people that there is another way. We believe it's a better way, but that, again, is our opinion. There is extensive research, you know, decades of research showing that it works. It's proven, and the results are unquestionable and undeniable. Farmers who switch over to organic and regenerative practices are showing increased yields in their first year, and they're also producing a better and healthier product. So, you know, we believe this movement is very important to everybody involved. And the last thing I want to say is that, you know, the town has a great opportunity here to really embrace this and to just really grab the bull by the horns here and take the lead. Because this movement is coming, and I believe that we could be the leaders of this. And one day, other towns will be looking to us and asking you, wow, how did you do that? You know, you guys did great things, and, you know, we think that we can really show the rest of the state, you know, how it's done. So, you know, again, we urge you to take this seriously, and hopefully this does come to a vote soon. Hopefully, it's a positive one so that we can get the ball rolling on this. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Carl Dunham.
Hi, good evening. It's nice to be here. I want to address.
Carl, just your additional mark, please.
I'm sorry, 195 Candlewood Mountain Road. I wanted to address your item 12B set for executive session. I've been a part of some of that litigation. This all stems from when Candlewood Solar proposed a 20-megawatt proposal for Candlewood Mountain. And that resulted in a group called Rescue Candlewood Mountain taking issue with that. We've gone to the Siding Council, and now we're in court. We've gone back and forth. The present status of that whole thing is now boiling down to one hearing on May 13 in front of an attorney, not an attorney, excuse me, in front of a judge apart from the Siding Council. We've, in the past, we have not gotten very far with the Siding Council. Even when things were sent back for correction, they really weren't corrected. So quite frankly, I don't have much confidence in the Siding Council. However, our lawsuit basically includes provisions whereby this whole application can be terminated. And anything further that Candlewood Solar would want to go forward with, which is now Amoresco, would have to be done under a new application. And I submit to you that if that's the case, that would not be considered a good location for solar. The place that they're now talking about looking at is the farming area of that property. There was all sorts of issues with respect to core forest, all sorts of issues with respect to salamanders, access to the power line, and the town has been very helpful. It basically funded a lot of the engineering that went on to establish that it was an ill-planned proposal. So now we're at the close of our positions insofar as a lawsuit, and now we're talking about withdrawing. I just think it's premature. I see no real benefit in it, and I urge the council to postpone any consideration of this until after the hearing on May 13. The concern has been, oh, the town doesn't want to spend any more money. You don't have to spend any more money. This is not your fight. So I just urge you not to go forward with this stipulation. This stipulation makes all sorts of concessions without clarity. It's not complete. I don't see any of the database to really support what they're talking about coming in with a 4-megawatt. That is a whole process in and of itself. So I really am troubled by this being going on now, and I just don't see any point in it. And I hope that you will postpone any decision you have until after our hearing and the determination by the judge. This has been going on for three or four years now. It's cost us all a lot of money, and I just don't think this is the answer that's before you now. Okay? Thank you. And if I could be, I would love to be invited in to answer any questions, but I'm not, so I'm assuming that that's not the case. Thank you.
Mr. Mike Sinello.
Mike Sinello, 111 Willow Springs. For those folks at home that are watching, I'm aware of the technical difficulties. We're working on them as we speak. So I'm going to have to go pretty quick to get to some of the debunking I have to go through at the end, but the policy of the squeakiest wheel getting the grease should come to an end tonight. Of course, I'm referring to the Trinisky Road Bridge project, which won't break ground until next year and will wind up costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, of taxpayer money, more than it would have if the engineers and directors at DPW were allowed to do their job and complete the bridge years ago, as would have been the case if not for the nonstop interference into the pedantic minutia of day-to-day engineering and design decisions of the Department of Public Works and by a very tiny handful of people. If nothing else, you should ask yourselves, when it comes to this subject, who didn't come to these meetings? The answer is 28,000 people minus five or six New Milford residents. I'm the biggest proponents of rule by consent of the governed. I'm also a fan of running things like DPW like a business, which means adhering to the proper duties of this body as it relates to the ongoing operations of DPW. In short, proper management in the face of nitpicking micromanagement. As Ms. Francis alluded to at the last meeting, the job of the town council is to make enterprise-level decisions and to either trust or not trust the director of operations to execute those enterprise-level decisions and not to make those decisions themselves. In short, the job of the town council is to either trust the decisions of the DPW director to ensure projects get completed in a reasonable time and not with an exorbitant cost to the taxpayers who foot that bill or to fire the director. For the record, I've yet to see any reason to argue for DPW Director Jack Healy's termination. In fact, the man should be lauded for the patience he's shown throughout this process. In this case, the consent of the governed comes from the trust we instill our elected officials with every November, a point made especially true this past November, which produced a statement election. We elect town council members ostensibly, at least, based on our trust or their value judgment, and tonight is a perfect example of how that value judgment may be exhibited because you take on these issues ad hoc. And that's because tonight we need a decision. And it's not just because not giving those instructions tonight will wind up costing New Milford taxpayers hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, in grants whose application is due essentially Friday. There is also the precedent that will be set. Will we continue to be okay with this level of interference? Are we okay with spending hundreds of thousands of dollars that belong to 28,000 people to kowtow to the whims of five or six people? And more importantly, the never-ending goalposts moving they presented and the spurious and endlessly debunked arguments they presented in utter antagonism to the notions of proper governance. The majority here tonight were elected to act on reason and reason alone. Because there are people here who, for some reason, still subscribe to the idea that the squeakiest wheel should get the grease, I put together a petition, as some of you have seen, to show at least equal opposition to the demands of said five or six. There's also an online version that has roughly the same number of signatories. More importantly, hopefully, this two-week and part-time effort of mine will showcase the continued support from this community of the valued judgment of those officials we elected just last November. Please end this charade. Please instruct DPW Director Jack Healy to procure a design for a two-lane bridge, which will save hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, of the 28,000 people's money. With a Box Culver Foundation, if possible, please stop wasting what is both the time and money of 28,000 New Milford residents and taxpayers, and please establish here tonight the precedent that we will never do this again. Again, more than half a decade, and we still haven't broken ground on what's going to cost probably $2 million, we're definitely going to be over $1.5 million at this point, for an 18-foot-long bridge. Please stop wasting what is both the time and money of the 28,000 New Milford residents and taxpayers, and please establish here tonight the precedent that we will never do this again. Please allow the good folks at DPW to do their damn jobs and to build a damn bridge. First things first, we've gone over the scenic road violation with Randy DiBella, who explained that there hasn't been a proposal. There hasn't been an actual design presentation yet, so there's no way to have violated the laws that relate to that. Two-lane bridge will save taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars. That's a real point to make, and you have a duty to the taxpayers to not spend infinity of their dollars on projects like these. When it comes to speeding, you don't resolve the concerns of safety associated with speeding with more danger. The reason people slow down for a one-lane bridge is because it's more dangerous than a two-lane bridge. Obviously, two-ton hunks of steel going in opposite directions down the same lane is more dangerous than a two-lane bridge where they're not doing it, which is why the state doesn't want to get involved with a two-lane bridge.
Mike, we need to wrap up.
Okay, that's enough. Thanks, guys.
I don't have any more.
Yes, I'd like to move to suspend the rules to add item 4B to the youth agency leadership team monthly update.
Any discussion? Everybody, Kate, can you repeat the motion?
Yes, I will. Move to suspend the rules to add item 4B, which is the youth agency leadership team monthly update.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, now pay attention. Okay, move to.
I'd like to, I make a motion to add to the agenda. The videographer for the town appears to have a conflict of interest with his social media platform. It's come to my attention that a lot of people are feeling intimidated and afraid to come because they're.
Wait, are you making a motion?
This is the motion. This is the motion. So the motion is to open a discussion on if there can be some sort of policy about what he does with the town's video.
You have to suspend the rules to add that to the agenda.
Right, so.
That's the motion.
No, yeah, the motion is to suspend the rules and add that, to discuss the videographer of the town.
Do we have a second?
That's it.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? What's the, what we're trying to achieve here? I'm not quite sure.
Right now, we're just asking.
Suspending the rules, Sal, to add to the agenda the item that Hillary has that we will discuss this evening, what relates to our videographer and town, the town, right? Yeah, the town video that he makes.
So how does that have to do with the town business?
He's making the video of our meeting.
He records our meetings.
Okay, yes, I understand.
So we have a motion, and we have a second, right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Both.
Hold on, so can the ayes please raise their hand again, so. Ayes.
Yes.
Alex and Hillary.
And MJ.
Yep, and then the noes again, Laura.
Aye. Yes. I'm aye.
But you're aye, oh, okay. And then Katie? Katie, what's my?
I'm sorry. You see Mike?
No, what's?
Put your hand up. Put your hand up there so she can see it. Come on. One, two, three, four. Got it?
Five, two.
Okay, so we'll make that item. What one do you want to make that one? Four, C?
Make that one right before executive session.
Okay, that would be item 11E. Okay. Anybody else want to suspend the rules while we're here? Okay, okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Items 3A, B, C, and D.
Second.
It'll be Chris. Just want to make note that the Parks and Rec is asking to accept a donation of $4,500 from the New Milford Cricket Club, which is to be used toward the construction of a permanent cricket pitch and a batting cage at Clatter Valley Park. The New Milford Parks and Rec would like to thank the Cricket Club for their generosity. And item D is the Fire Marshal is asking permission to accept a grant donation from GM Global for $840 to purchase cameras and accessories.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number four, move to accept the following appointment to the Conservation Commission of Andrew McPhee, filling in Adam Halasikun's vacancy. His term would be from April 25, 2022 through January 31, 2024.
And, if I have a second? And Andrew's here. Thank you, Andrew. And if anybody would like to talk to Andrew, he's been serving as an alternate. And when Adam resigned, retired, we've had, excuse me, Andrew fill in the void and would like to take the full seat. I think Andrew would be a great person for that seat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Andrew.
I hope he lasts as long as Adam did. Okay. Item 4B is the youth agency leadership team monthly update. Kathy and I don't think we met.
My name is Baker Waters. I'm 17, and I'm a junior at New Milford High School. And for the past 23 years, peace over violence has run an inspiring and powerful opportunity to practice solidarity and support survivors by renewing our commitment to exposing harmful behaviors and attitudes surrounding sexual violence. Denim Day is a campaign on a Wednesday in April in honor of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The campaign began after a ruling by the Italian Supreme Court where a rape conviction was overturned because the justices felt that since the victim was wearing tight jeans, she must have helped the person who raped her remove her jeans, thereby implying consent. The following day, the women in the Italian Parliament came to work wearing jeans in solidarity with the victim. Peace over violence developed the Denim Day campaign in order, in response to this case and the activism surrounding it. Since then, what started as a local campaign to bring awareness to victim blaming and destructive myths started as a local campaign to bring awareness, oh, sorry, that surround sexual violence has grown into a movement. As the longest-running sexual violence prevention and education campaign in history, Denim Day asks community members, elected officials, businesses, and students to make a social statement with their fashion statement by wearing jeans on this day as a visible means of protest against misconceptions that surround sexual violence. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Our youth agency media students did research and created an educational video to spotlight. to spotlight the topic and recognize Denim Day, which is April 27th, 2022, and to set aside to remind everyone that clothing is not an excuse or invitation for sexual assault. This project uncovered some staggering statistics about victims of sexual assault and the stigma and misconceptions that prevent victims from getting help and often keeps attackers from being held accountable. Please check out our YouTube channel and social media and podcasts, uh, to learn more about Denim Day. Thank you for your time.
Great job.
Thank you, Baker.
Great job.
You have a question?
Chris?
Where do we find links to your, your YouTube channel or...
You could just look at the New Milford Youth Agency. We're on Facebook, Instagram. And then there's actually a link to all of our social media, so YouTube. And we're hoping to have the video up this week about Denim Day.
Okay. Thank you for addressing some uncomfortable topics to us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job, Baker.
See you next month.
Yes, see you next month.
Uh, item five, Mayor's comments.
Thank you. Um, real quick, as we do each and every, uh, meeting, we go over the COVID numbers. And in your guys' packets, we're actually sent to you today because I got it from Dr. Levin, his update. So you have that. Uh, we're back into, uh, the red zone and most of, most of our area is as well. The numbers, and these are in totality. And I do have some people ask me, why do we still do it? Why are we still giving the numbers up? Well, I have some people that are immune compromised, or their family is, and they appreciate the fact that they have these numbers so they can make an informed decision. So we'll continue to do that. So if there are people that want to make the informed decision, or if they don't want to hear it, they can always turn the volume down right now, alright? So State of Connecticut is at 753,836. Litchfield County is at 28,026, which is up 98 from Friday. Hospitalizations for the entire county are at 7, which is down 1 from Friday. New Milford is at 4,0947, which is up 19 from Friday. Vaccine statistics as of 4/21/22 with a 7- to 10-day look back. First dose is at 22,689, which is 84.64%. Second dose is at 20,785, which is 77.54%. Also, to where those that do want to get vac, vaccinated, either first dose, second dose, third dose, or, or immune compromised, you can get your fourth dose. You can do so with our Health District on Wednesdays at Pettibone. Uh, Mike, we'd like to congratulate your daughter Mia on saying the Yukon Record 5K. Outstanding, so thank you to Mia. New Milford graduate, so that's outstanding, outstanding. As Baker had just said, uh, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. The town of New Milford continues to advocate for help in preventing sexual assault, reduce the stigma, and bring awareness to resources available. If you know someone that needs help, you can contact the 24-hour hotline, which is 203-731-5204. As Baker eloquently said, on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 27th, uh, we're asking, all our town employees are going to ask to wear jeans, uh, which with the purpose is to support survivors and educate, uh, the public about all forms of sexual violence. Starting tomorrow, Tuesday, the 26th, is the Start Where You Give, Give Local fundraising campaign that helps our nonprofits here in New Milford, who do so much for our community. Um, the kickoff starts at 11:00 AM right here at Town Hall. We'll be doing a proclamation. And this fundraising goal that they're having here locally is to have over 1,500 individual donors and raise a quarter of a million dollars to benefit our local nonprofits and help our community. So if you have the ability to do so, please donate to your favorite nonprofit that is involved in the Give Local program.
Online?
Online.
You have to, you have to donate online.
Uh, also, if you're a first-time homebuyer, there's a free first-time homebuyer workshop on the 27th from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Pettibone. I want to thank Habitat for Humanity, Newtown Savings Bank as the prime sponsors for this event. And it's a wonderful class to understand, especially those that may want to become part of the Habitat Humanity family and get a wonderful home.
Is this, um, is it two days from now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, at Pettibone, and it's free.
Right.
Also, full scholarships are available at Nagatuck Valley Community College in Danbury for Advanced Manufacturing Certification Program. Uh, and it's at Western Connecticut State University. Uh, you can attend the Scholarship Information Center and tour the new location. This is an opportunity for interested students to learn more about the program and meet the instructor. Register to attend one of the information session dates, which is May 6th from 3:30 to 4:30. May 20th from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. And you can check the date, the other information at www.nview.edu/lindee. All the tuition expenses are included. Textbooks for all courses, materials, and technical equipment packages are included as well. Hands-on access to state-of-the-art manufacturing technology and preparation for employment. Graduates earn 31 college credits in two semesters towards an associate's degree in Technology Studies. On completion, the candidates will earn two certificates. Certification in Fundamentals of Machine Technology, Certification in Advanced Machine Technology. And, uh, they'll also get OSHA 10 certification. Now, the program in manufacturing prepares individuals for hands-on positions in manufacturing sector as inspectors, machine operators, and CNC machinists. And some of those jobs can be six-figure jobs to start. So great opportunity if you're, uh, someone to looking changing careers or you're looking to somebody that's looking to, um, move into this direction rather than a four-year degree. It's a great opportunity to, to, uh, check out. Uh, the reservoir dam, uh, update. Uh, the DPW team has been clearing trees at the base of the dam. If you have gone up there, definitely take a look and check it out. Crew's focused on clearing the spillway, which I believe they did clear all the channel vegetation. They're going to line the channel with large stone to prevent further erosion. And, uh, this schedule, this maintenance is scheduled to last for a couple of weeks. And all is in, done in-house by our DPW team. The Milford High School roof update. Contractor continues to install panels on the backside of the small gym. They're going to move to the front gym once completed there. If you do take a look, you can see a lot of that roof, uh, looks wonderful with that standing seam. Uh, and we'll follow, continue to provide updates as we continue to move forward. Town Hall roof, as you can see here, is mostly complete. They're doing a lot of the painting here on the woodwork and completing the masonry work. It looks beautiful. We did a great job to our contractor, our, uh, DPW team for Jack and his team for helping managing it, and our building committee. The Milford Library construction continues on. Uh, we're looking at a tentative date at the end of June for an opening. And again, state-of-the-art facilities, uh, inside looks truly amazing. And, uh, that's what I have for tonight, Katie, so far.
Alright.
Thank you.
Item number six. Uh, move to approve, uh, requests from the New Milford High School Special Ed Department that the Southern Crossover on the Green be closed on Saturday, May the 7th, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM for the Unified Buddies Special Needs Awareness Walk. And that's pending Traffic Authority approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Item number seven. Uh, move to approve the, uh, transfer of funds that Parks and Rec is asking for, uh, that will not be needed from, because they, uh, due to demand and the need to transfer, they want to move from account 104505005132, which is a 2021, 2022 account, to, in the amount of $20,000, and move that to account 1045050051001, which is a 2021, 2022 account, to continue to offer these programs. And, thank you. Shouldn't they be transferring to the account for this year?
Two different accounts.
I know, but they're transferring it from a 21 to 22 account to another 21, 22 account. Is that correct? Okay.
Intro department.
So I just wanted to make sure.
What are they two accounts for?
This is because they, uh, had to transfer funds because they have a big demand for their programs. They're offering more programs and they have a big demand for them.
So what, Parks, anyone from Parks?
Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
They're not needed in the one account.
No, I know, I just want to know what the two accounts are.
Self-sustaining accounts.
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing I'm going to say is, is just the wording of it is so confusing in that we, that...
Really?
Will not be, yeah, absolutely, listen.
Yes, I read it, I know.
All right, I, I'm going to move to amend it because it should say Park and Rex is offering more programs this year due to a demand and need to transfer funds from one account to the other. The fact that we're saying funds are not needed might be misinterpreted by some people. It's just poorly worded.
Good.
Well, you could not know, Greg, but I'm the councilman that says it's poorly worded.
So as amended, um,
I agree with you.
Uh, I moved to transfer...
Motion and a second?
Yes, we do.
Was it an amendment?
Yep.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. It's in the same departments, in the Parks and Rec line item off the budget.
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item number eight. Move to have a discussion and possible action on the permanent bridge for Chineski Road.
Second.
Jack?
We're putting the bridge in Chineski?
Yes.
Yeah, you know where that is?
Yeah.
Good evening, Jack. I don't know, I think we've gone over most of the information the last several meetings. I will, there's one, there's one thing I do want to note. It was brought up that the due date for the application is this Friday. The state's extended it until, um, May 31st, just so that you know that. But I would, I would ask that you make a decision. I'm requesting direction. Being that, right now, going through the state application process is very extensive. Um, we were on a call, uh, last Thursday for Mariel Bridge. And there are two different, there's different ways of going through the permitting process with Army, with Army Corps and the state. One's self-verification, another is called PCN, which is Preconstruction Notification. An SB is very easy. It's, you fill out the forms, the engineers certify that the bridge meets all of the requirements, and you get your number and off you go. The PCN is not that, um, easy. You have to then go through all of the CONDA, DEP, and Army Corps review processes, because you can't self-verify. And, and the, the catch on the self-verification is they have a new permitting requirement, or one that they are now strictly enforcing, and that is a two-foot freeboard. That is going to, right now, if we are asking for a waiver on Mariel Bridge because it will make the span on that much, much, much longer than it currently is. And if it was also to be applied to the Chineski Road Bridge, it would make it much longer also. So I'm asking that you, you direct us so that we can start getting a, a design put together so we can start that process. I don't want to delay this any more than we already, we're already looking at construction at the earliest next year. I, we prefer we not wait much longer and we get started. Now, as far as, um, I, I'm not sure if there's any other information I can provide you. At the last meeting, you authorized, or I guess, yeah, the last meeting, you authorized Public Works to start a temporary bridge. We have started the work on that. We've gathered our information. We've received, received, uh, Purchasing Authority approval to order a, a, a bridge from Acro Company. Uh, we are working with them right now to work out the details. I have worked with Barton La Judas, who are, is our, uh, bridge engineers. We are working on some details with them as far as the design of the temporary abutments. I'm also working with M&amp;O Construction, uh, they, to, to install the bridge. M&amp;O was selected because they previously installed the Chin Moi Bridge. You had, you had one of these temporary bridges in place several years ago, the Chin Moi. M&amp;O did that. So I figured we would use somebody who's familiar with this bridge, knows how to install it. We are looking at the temporary, um, abutments. I have estimates on time from them and costs, and I submitted all that to Greg Ostapal today. Other than that, I can answer any questions that we have.
Katie?
Oh, thank you, Jack. Um, that just, you just reminded me of something. The Chin Moi Bridge. Is the temporary bridge still there?
No, that, that, that was replaced by a box culver. Uh, the, the temporary bridge was, came back to the town and then I have, I have not, I'm not sure. Oh, Randy was going to raise.
Yeah, I remember. That was, uh, Mayor Murphy arranged that. I did paperwork. That was returned to the state, was on loan from the state at no charge.
We borrowed it.
Yeah, it was a loan. They offered it, yeah, affirmatively.
So you don't have one we might borrow now?
I tried.
Thank you.
I, I was trying.
Chris?
So Jack, um, the options in front of us are still as they were at the end of March. A one-lane bridge for 1.4 million, a two-lane bridge for 1.6. But the two-lane bridge, uh, would qualify for state funding, uh, which would, uh, there'd be about a 600K, uh, lower cost for the two-lane bridge to New Milford taxpayers. That's still...
Correct. That's, the figures have not changed from that time. Uh, we haven't updated those. You know, construction costs may change between now and then, but the application is filled out in, in that, in that way.
So the total, the total of the two-lane bridge is one, is, uh, under 1, right?
No.
1.6.
No, 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 with the state. Yes, with the state reimbursement, it's under, yeah, it's like $300,000.
It's, how much is it going to be, total?
Yeah.
The two-lane bridge, at the end of the day, what, how much is that going to cost us?
About, about...
New Milford taxpayers?
Yes. About $300,000 to New Milford taxpayers.
Would, you're including the 600,000?
Yep.
From ARPA plus the state 600,000?
Yes, okay.
The total differential between the two choices is what?
It's, uh...
To the taxpayers?
Excuse me?
Four million difference.
Oh, no, no, not four million.
No, between the two.
600,000.
600,000.
I'm sorry.
I thought I heard 300.
No.
No, no.
It was, it's a 600,000 dollar difference. Uh, the two-lane bridge would only cost New Milford taxpayers a total of 300,000 dollars.
And the one-lane bridge?
And the, and the one-lane bridge would cost them 800,000 dollars.
So it's 500,000.
Now, my note said 230 to New Milford taxpayers from the March 28th meeting.
I'll read you the numbers. Yeah.
Thank you, Jack.
A single-lane bridge, as, as we have tentatively designed, is estimated to be 1, 1,430,000 dollars with 600, there, 600,000 dollars of ARPA funds. So the total to the taxpayers would be 830,000 dollars. Now...
No, just, just...
Okay. A two-lane bridge, um, the estimated cost is 1,660,000 dollars. Again, take away 600,000 from ARPA funds. Also, you get, now, the reimbursement from the state is 50%, so I take away 830,000 dollars, and it comes out to 230,000 dollars.
So Jack, the state does take 50% of the total cost.
Yes.
They're not going to include removing the ARPA money we're going to put upfront?
I have sent multiple emails to the State of Connecticut requesting that if there was something different, they would, they'd tell me. They have not come back and, and said that it would make any difference. I didn't, I have not got an official email back from them. So I called, I spoke to a representative over there, and he said, to his knowledge, the 600,000 dollars from ARPA funds would not reduce the reimbursement. and he said, to his knowledge, the 600,000 dollars from ARPA funds would not reduce the reimbursement.
Right, because they really wouldn't technically have to know that there was any other subsidy coming?
Yes, they do.
Oh, they do have to know it?
Yeah.
Okay, so if they know it, are we sure?
Yeah, well, as I said, I had sent them multiple emails, they have not responded. I called a representative over there, and he said, to his knowledge, it does not impact it. They're looking for other types of grants, that's considered ARPA funds, which is money for the town to spend.
Okay.
Just now that this whole new concept of, what's the name of it, Acro?
Acro.
So, it was brought up in public participation. Why are we not considering the cheapest version of all that's, that's making everybody happy, which is the permanent Acro, for 20% more of the cost of the, of the temporarys?
Okay.
Because it wouldn't. The, 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 the cost of that, the 20% difference, it's only a difference in the cost of a temporary bridge versus a temporary bridge. The temporary bridge we're, we're putting in right now doesn't require Army Corps of Engineering approval, DEEP approval, or CONDA approval. I can put, we can just put it in, we have to go to Inland's Wellness to get their review. We, and we've selected the one we selected because it's flexible. We can, you, once we take it down, it goes into the towns, into Public Works, are, are, are used, and we can use it on other bridges, like we have, we have other bridges that we have to work on. Any permanent bridge that we put in has to go through the review. So, they would, they would make that bridge have to meet all of the, again, the design standards, the, the length, the height, and everything like that. So, we have not priced that, and also, each of the people I've spoken with said the metal bridge is, is noisy. We can, we can look at that as we go forward, if, you know, when we get to design, the next standard step. We got into design, if we wanted to look at that versus a concrete bridge, we could look at that, come up with the pros and cons at that point. At this point, we're looking to get a temporary bridge in. The most flexible for the town of New Milford is a, what they call a modular bridge, it's a panel bridge. It's gonna look like an erector set. It's gonna be 13 feet, 6 inches wide, and we're going to put temporary abutments in, set it down, tie it in place, and, and it will be used until the permanent bridge is designed and installed.
So, what we're doing here is we're just going to, the motion is to take an action, discuss an action on the design of the permanent bridge. You want to put the temporary bridge in that can be used again while you, while the design is worked out. Right?
Yeah, I need the direction so that I know which, whether to submit the application or not.
And so, along with the temporary bridge, which costs, how much?
Right now, I gave an estimate to Greg Ossoff, the temporary bridge will cost about 213,000 dollars.
213,000?
I believe you authorized 290,000.
It's already approved.
We've kept it under that.
So, we have a temporary bridge put in place. You've given us a price for the one-lane and the two-lane, and the reasons for the difference in the price, and what the taxpayer would end up with, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So, I just want to make sure, so the temporary bridge is given. If 200,000 dollars is given.
It's not a little motion.
Yes.
No, it's already been.
I just want to, since we're recorded, I don't want to confuse right now.
I do think it's important, just because of what we've heard, both in letters and tonight, that one of these will kick into gear, the committee, to form the committee for the scenic roads ordinance.
Great question, Hillary, so.
And possibly a, a, some sort of a legal site.
Randy, can you, can you opine, as I have asked before, on the scenic road committee, and then when does the committee itself be in its process?
Absolutely, we've talked about this, the mayor and I have talked about this. The scenic road committee needs to be appointed. Once you make a determination to make a change, to do something there permanently, the, the ordinance requires the scenic road committee to be, to be impaneled. And that takes place in, at its, at its leisure, is when they, where they appoint the, they get a chair, and they appoint their meetings and hearings. That's how it's done. They report back, and they need you, Jack, sorry. And, and then they report back to the town council when their work is done with a recommendation. But the scenic road committee kicks in after the decision's made on the bridge.
Well, but.
We have, we know we have to put a bridge in.
Yeah, but as I read it, I have to provide them with a layout and, and, and.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I, I have to go to Army Corps, and I have to go DOT and everybody to get to that point before I can give them, and then the aesthetics comes, we can design the aesthetics.
That, your problem is the technicals.
Yeah.
Because that scenic road committee, as I've stated before, is not an engineering entity. It's an aesthetics and beautification entity, and a preservation of the scenic road condition. They need to be appointed by the mayor.
I agree.
And the town council, and then you report to them, that's why I said you're involved, whether you like it or not. So, you're gonna, you have to report to them based upon what your findings and recommendations are.
Okay, it's, once I get through Army Corps?
Well, yeah, you have to have information.
Okay, I agree, I just want to make sure that that point is here.
And they can sit there having coffee.
So, Randy, just one more time for everybody watching, everybody in the audience, Jack, is that this kicks in once Jack gets the design?
That's when they start meeting, you can appoint them now, you can appoint them anytime.
But it actually starts meeting once Jack has the design?
Other than an organization, they can have an organizational meeting to appoint a chairman, appoint a protocol, and the rules of procedure, which I recommend, that they actually adopt a, a rule.
But they can't start meeting until the design.
But they can start meeting, but they can't determine.
On the substance of the bridge itself.
No, they're not engineers, right? And, and it's a beautification.
Chris?
Do we believe that either of the two options in front of us would violate the scenic road ordinance?
My concern, and, and I have mentioned this a couple times, my concern is with these new Army Corps regulations, that this bridge is gonna be bigger. It doesn't matter, and, and I'm not talking width, I'm only talking length, or span. Because of the 1.2 times bank width, that would open it up to begin with. Then, if I have, if, if we, if the Army Corps does not grant us a waiver on the two-foot freeboard, it's gonna link, it's gonna extend the span. Concern, I'll give you, as an example, Mariel Bridge, right now, as we've preliminary laid it out, currently lays up here at 20 feet, a span. Without the two-foot freeboards, we're already at 40-foot span.
Holy God.
My concern is with, based on our meeting last week with them, was, they're gonna make, they're still talking to us about lifting Mariel Bridge up, which would impact, you know, it would, West Meeting House, Mariel, and I'm, I'm, we are arguing not to do that. But I, I see the same issue happening with Cherniski. I, I was on vacation last week, and, you know, what else do people go on vacation? You go back to another place where you work and talk about their projects. And I stopped in Berlin, and, because I left them a bunch of projects to do, and I stopped and talked to them about, they are having the same issue there, they are having to go back and redesign bridges and lift them up two feet.
But if the Army Corps mandates that, I mean, what can you do?
It's, it's, it's a discussion.
If they won't give you a waiver, and the scenic road ordinance doesn't.
Randy?
There's no appeal. Once the determin, an engineering determination is made for the Army Corps of Engineers, it's an administrative act, but it's not a quasi-judicial act. It's a technical act that Jack has to follow.
There is no appeal.
As Councilman Cogirov asks, how does that affect the scenic road ordinance?
Well, the scenic road ordinance, it's, scenic road, it still applies. It needs to be applied to the extent that it can, within reasonable engineering probability. It needs to be paid attention to. It means something, it's the law. Federal supremacy, I don't want to get into federal supremacy, but that obviously controls, overrides. But the scenic road ordinance still applies, and it would be applied to the extent that it will be consistent with engineering standards, as determined by, by the Army Corps.
So, the bridge span is going to be war regardless of it's a single or double lane?
Yes.
That has nothing to do with it?
No, it doesn't, it, it really has no impact, it's strictly the, the water passing through.
Got it.
Yeah, I, just gonna, the one versus two-lane bridge, the state will only give us money because, for the two-lane bridge, because, I assume, because they feel it's a safer alternative, and they don't feel.
Yeah, we, we, we sent them an email requesting a clarification on that. They will not reimburse for a, a, a one-lane bridge, they feel it's functionally insufficient rights to start. Now, there is a caveat to that. If the, if the ADT was under 100 cars per day, they would, they would consider it. The ADT up there is above 100 cars a day, it's in the neighborhood of 600 cars.
So, so, just to get, the state feels that a one-lane bridge is not as safe, and it's gonna cost the taxpayers 500,000 dollars less. Just want to get that straight in my head.
Well, the state said they won't reimburse.
No, I mean, if we go, if we go with the two-lane bridge, we save 500,000 dollars, and according to the state, and the experts in engineers, it's safer.
600,000.
600,000, you're right.
600,000.
It's 600, and it's functionally deficient, is what they say.
Right.
So, the state, so the state is mandating us to say, they're basically homeless money over here to say, do what we want. Which goes back to my other point, when we're here sitting, talking about zoning. Why would we give away rights that we have for our town to the state, and we don't like, we don't like what the state's doing? That's why I keep going back, I just don't in my mind understand why you guys gave away, wanted to give away a right for zoning to the state. It just blows my mind when you get stuff like this, where they're shoving stuff down our throat.
I mean, Mr. Mayor.
Tom?
I mean, we're, listen, we, can we just, I mean, I don't mean to, to push this, but we've had this discussion for about a year, right? We have 600 cars a day that are now being diverted. I know, because many of them go by my house and my neighbor's house, and they're wrecking Little Bear and Big Bear for a little more than a year right now. So, really, we gotta call the question, are we voting on a two-lane bridge or a one-lane bridge? Okay, we've got a half a dozen people who want a one-lane bridge, I understand it. We've got the, the other 28,000 people who would like to save some of the money and get this project done, so the 600 cars can go back to driving on Cherniski Bridge. I would like to vote on this, and just get this over.
Katie?
Jack, I just want to clarify, so, let's talk about the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, because we have to pay attention to them, we can't ignore them, and live through it, I guess. So, they would okay a one-lane bridge?
The Army Corps does.
They don't care.
That's not their, their thing is the water passing through.
Yeah.
Traffic over, they don't care.
So, if the water goes under, they're happy?
They're happy.
Okay.
I mean, we're just trying to think through all of the outcome, all of the consequences of our actions. So, one thought that came to me is if we are forced to do a two-lane bridge because of the cost differential, and we can't wrap our heads around, you know, the 600 more to taxpayers, is there some sort of thing that will keep traffic slow, like an ordinance that we could pass, which they've done in Washington on certain roads? You know, is that a possibility that could be?
Hillary, I know I've spoken with Jack.
Yeah.
And with Randy, and, uh, Jack first, can you?
A weight ordinance, I should clarify.
I have gone back, and I, because originally they did not pass a.
Weight, did you say?
A weight ord, like, you know, over, yeah, tonnage, exactly.
There are, we had asked originally for no-through trucks, and they didn't grant that to us. There are five requirements to do a, to meet as far as a weight ordinance. My question back to them is, I have some concern about meeting all of the requirements. I've been speaking with the DOT about this. I'm also, I've already contacted both Washington and Kent about this, because there's also the, the, what's that? The, something of none, un, un. Thank you. Anyway, you know, concerned about that, that you'll divert cars to other roads. So, the idea is, if you, you can't, I don't think doing Cherniski in a, in a vacuum is the right thing to do. So, I've been talking with both Kent and Washington about this. And, right now, it seems that they would both be amenable, but I don't, I'm, you know, I want to make sure that I cross all the Ts and not all the Is. There are five requirements, I have a concern about one of the requirements the state sent me. And I've asked them to just give me clarification, I think we meet the other four. But I am working on it.
Randy?
Yes, there's a way. Jack, I thought about this ad nauseam.
Jack, I have a question.
We think there's a way to get it, we think there's a way to get it done.
Thank you, Randy.
I'd like to ask a question.
Mary Jane?
How is this two-lane bridge gonna affect Batista's driveway, the entrance to their driveway?
It, it won't.
How are you gonna work that out?
I have to work that out with Army Corps and DOT and DEEP. It's not, it has nothing to do with one-lane or two-lane, it has to do with the span. If, it, they essentially get, when they went and got their new general permit, their general permit terminated last September. And if you remember, we couldn't apply, we couldn't do much after that. Their, their, their new general permit came into force in December. They are enforcing with everybody the two-foot freeboard. And there's multiple ways of trying to address that. One of them, which is, is no more palatable, is you extend, you make the span even wider. And, you know, I think either way, we have to watch the Batista's driveway, and I am, I have brought that up to Army Corps in my conversations with them already.
Chris?
So, I, I have a lot of concerns about, you know, once, if, if a two-lane bridge goes in, we're talking about the speed of people driving on the road is obviously gonna increase. I mean, it's already, it's already pretty crazy before the bridge went out. I can't imagine what it's gonna be like, you know, after a two-lane bridge is in there. And then, obviously, it's gonna be a safety issue for, it's a safety issue for me pulling out my driveway, and it's also a safety issue for Batista's pulling out of their driveway. And my other question is, basically, how much is this actually gonna cost each taxpayer in the town of New Milford if we put the, the one-lane bridge in? Could, could we get an estimate about that, exactly what it's gonna cost each taxpayer?
How many taxpayers do we have?
There's like 28,000 residents.
Right, because they don't all pay taxes.
I don't know, I can't answer that.
It's gonna cost, that's the name of the game, period, it's gonna cost money. Yeah, but it's gonna be $1,600,000, it's gonna cost money.
Um, one thing I put out there, I did, um, talk to New Milford Police and asked for, over a five-year period, how many accidents have been on Cherniski Road? So, in five years, we'd cover before the bridge was closed and after. In five years, there's been five accidents. No trucks involved, it was five cars. Three of the five were involved deer. One involved someone avoiding a squirrel. And then, another one was someone pulling out of their, their driveway.
No fish? Just kidding.
And, you know, the truck issue that's been brought up in public comments, it, it seems to me, I'm trying to figure out why a truck driver would go down Cherniski, and I think.
Google Maps?
They're cutting over Route 22.
No, well, they're, they're, you're not using Google Maps, because Google Maps with a bridge out.
Oh, yeah.
Is not gonna take you over there, and they're saying that's happening today. So, it is cutting over, I think, to Route 55.
55 probably over to New York.
Right. And whether you've got a one-lane or a two-lane, those trucks are still gonna go. And I don't think any other truck is gonna decide, whoa, jeez, there's a two-lane on Cherniski, I'm gonna go down there now.
Late limit ordinance would not allow them to go.
No, it's, they, they've been going over it all the time, from what we get from public comments.
Right, because there's no ordinance yet.
Right, so, I don't think whatever we do on a bridge is gonna make a bit of difference in truck traffic there. I just don't see it.
Well, that's, here's a good point. Jack, what's the capacity difference between the, the one-lane as it would end up and the two-lane as it would end up?
Same. We have to design the bridge to meet the, the, the standard highway, standards for that.
Right.
I spent a lot of time on the phone today with Acro and with our design team. It must meet the ASHTO HL93 standard, which is for all trucks over all highways.
And that is?
It's about 36,000 pounds.
That's right.
Excuse me, 36 tons, excuse me.
Yeah, right.
Now, that being said, because we want a clarification, at one time, if you remember, the Veterans Bridge had a limit on it, for only trucks with permits, only permitted trucks. Uh, excuse me, unpermitted trucks, if you had, now, if you go around right now, if you drive around, and I, I asked the staff to look for us, several of the bridges right now are, are what I call derated. They're not, they're not, what it is, is that based on the inspections conducted by DOT, the rating has been lowered. We can't build a bridge to a lower standard if I, because if a pound truck goes over it at 40,000 pounds, or a oil truck, or a tree truck, or anything else, and the bridge fails, they can come back to the engineers and say, you just, you intentionally designed a deficient tr, uh, bridge, I can't do that. You know, we have licenses.
Jack, how do other towns police that permit, no permit deal?
I, I don't know.
We sit and watch, or what?
It's like a stop sign.
Right, right.
What about an opportunity of putting a speed camera there? If we have concerns about people flying up and down the road, why don't we add a little money to the project and put a camera on the bridge?
How about a speed?
I'm going around town.
How about a speed?
Well, I'm, I, listen, I'm not in favor, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm being sarcastic here at this point, but I mean, if that's what we're talking about, is slowing some folks down from a two-lane road that temporarily slows down over a one-lane bridge, and then starts back up again, I mean, it's almost as preposterous as putting the cameras up. I mean, where, how are we gonna, you know, we've gotta come to a decision here, it's been over a year. We understand, there's consequences on every decision here.
Are speed bumps allowed, Jack?
But we talked about that the last time, speed bumps are not allowed.
Nails?
Mike? Is the Army Corps of Engineer always involved, no matter what level bridge, and no matter, if you don't take any federal fundings or state funding?
The perfect example is Tamarack.
Right.
We got delayed, I was here for three years before we got Tamarack, which is, I'm up there today, and, and you're talking about a pipe. And, 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 we, they, we had to redesign that three times, because Army Corps was involved.
Yeah, so they're involved no matter what?
Yes.
They're always, if you're taking a leg, what you do is, you have the money, you just do it. And that's, that's kinda.
Any other questions?
And the board called the question, the 600 cars are being diverted to other roads.
We have to have a motion.
Right, okay, well, um, I did have a motion to, for a discussion and possible action on the design of the permanent bridge on Cherniski Road.
What does that mean?
You have to, the motion has to say what?
Let's amend.
Direction to Jack.
Let's amend the motion.
Okay, sorry.
To add, go ahead.
To add that we decide on the, the two-lane bridge design. To add that we decide on the, the two-lane bridge design.
Amend the motion that we would be discussing, which we are, and taking possible action, which we will, on the design as sugge-, as described by our DPW director, the one, the two-lane bridge.
Yes.
Right? I think we call it the two-lane bridge. We all understand what that means.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on the motion?
Any more?
Jamie?
What happens?
I have a question. One more question. I would like a firm answer from Greg Aspel as to what this is going to cost each taxpayer.
I, I reached out to the tax collector, Nancy McGavick, and she doesn't have the numbers off the top of her head. I would have to know how many bills she sends out and divide that number into the, the dollar amount we're talking about. I'll get you the answer at, you know, a later time unless you can come up with a definitive answer.
I don't see why that matters.
If I could just add one point. Doesn't matter, in my mind, that the $600,000 will pay for at least two bridges that we have coming up on our construction that's got to be over the next couple of years. Correct?
Mary Jane, as we know, you live there, and it's, it's near and dear to your heart, but you have to think about the whole, all the members of the town, not just your local area.
My last one.
Well, you know what? We spent millions of dollars on a turf field, you know, and there, there wasn't any big hoo-ha over that. And, you know, we're asking for a bridge that's going to be, to fit the scenic road ordinance and also be a safety issue. So-
Are you asking questions, Mary Jane?
Okay, so we got a couple-
And the other question is, Jack, you don't even have the studies done yet either, correct?
Well, we need, we've, we've, at this point, we need to have authorization of what we're looking at before we can start any further work.
That's right.
And state deems that two-lane bridges are safer. I mean, forget the marshes.
So what happens if the Scenic Road Committee, or whatever they're called, Commission, once they review everything, decide there's an issue with the two-lane bridge? What happens?
They're not engineers.
Randy, just so the public can-
Randy, say it again, please.
Scenic Road Committee is by- Just so the public can hear. Scenic Road Committee makes a report to the Town Council. The Town Council must consider the report when making their decision, but it doesn't bind the Town Council.
And their reason for being is to do what?
Is for, to protect, preserve and protect the preservation and beautification and aesthetics-
Right. Not to try to engineer-
No.
They're not engineers.
No, they're not.
Not to engineer. Okay. You said it. I just wanted everybody to hear it.
Okay, I think that the committee is to, is there to make sure that we adhere to the ordinance
and all of these things. So if it's in violation, if our approved bridge plan is in violation of the ordinance, they have grounds to come to stop the plan. That's the whole point.
No, no.
No, Hillary, that's not right.
That's a legislative determination. It's not a committee. It's a legislative determination.
It's a hollowed ordinance. This ordinance doesn't-
I didn't write it.
I don't think that the lawyer who wrote the letter feels similarly.
He's not the town attorney.
Okay. But I, so there is another side, perhaps.
Hillary, can I just say one thing? It's a lot of the things that we decide, excuse me, a lot of the things that the Town Council is charged to decide and talk about is to make a final decision on something. An ordinance or a, let's start with the committee. A committee, we have many committees, just like we said, you can't use the crossover without the Traffic Authority saying it's okay. Ultimately, though, we know that the, the way it's going to go is going to come to the people that, we're the legislative body, we're elected to do this. So I don't think it's hollow. I understand what you're trying to say, that they do have a role. But the role is not to re-engineer something or to overturn something that this body has decided is a fiscal, as well as an engineering, proper way to go. So-
And just one point. You didn't think it was hollow last meeting, when this body overruled the Scenic Road Committee and put lines along a mountain road?
That wasn't, say that again.
We didn't.
Last meeting-
No, the, the committee, the Scenic Road Committee didn't want the lines.
No, the Scenic Road Committee voted for the lines.
No, the Traffic Authority voted for them.
And, yeah, and the Traffic Authority and the DPW, yes. I was on the committee.
Oh, 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 I see. So the, the people who came before us were a minority of that committee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's time to call a question here.
I just wanted my last point, because I had raised my hand.
Once you call a question, it's over. We must vote on the amendment.
I didn't get a chance to speak in that discussion. And my, what I want-
It's over.
Okay.
Make vote on the amendment.
I call the question. Please let's vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Opposed. Opposed.
Thank you. Let's move this phone off. Thank you, Jack.
Next, Greg Aspel, Finance.
Good evening. This is March's financial update. For revenues, revenues are at 93% of budget. On a straight-line basis, we would expect them to be at 75%. Tax collections are at 100% of budget overall, with current taxes at 100%. Most departments are averaging above the straight-line calculation, with the exception of Sherman Tuition, Fire Marshal, and the MAX. And as I explained last report, the MAX's low revenues are offset by their low expenditures in that department. Expenditures, expenditures on a cash basis are at 68% of budget. I see no issues with expenditures at this point in time, with the expect, with the exception of dispatchers overtime and Public Works winter overtime, which are currently at 101% and 107.3% of budget respectively. Upon speaking with the chief, we have recently hired a dispatcher that will take the pressure off on the overtime budget in the Police Department. As far as winter overtime, I don't expect any other expenditures in that account. And I can handle this at year-end adjustments and transfer the $13,000 that were over budget at year-end. I do want to point out, though, that both the Police and Public Works Departments overall are well within their straight-line budgets. Unemployment compensation is running significantly under budget, with only 4.6% of the budget expended. In summary, on a cash basis, revenues are at $97,806,810.63, and expenditures are at $71,726,409.40, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of $27,804,123. Yes, sir.
Chris?
Greg, are you hearing anything at the state budget level? Or seeing anything that we should keep an eye on?
Well, the only thing I'm aware of is that the state partnership plan may be coming in a little higher than what we had budgeted. And I don't think at this point it's going to be a material difference. We'll be able to absorb that.
Okay. Any other questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg.
Item 10, move for discussion and possible actions on a fund distribution for farmers and farmer education assistance.
Okay. Thank you, Katie.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Just as kind of a re-entification from two, two meetings ago. We talked about farmers and farmer education assistance. And just to kind of recap some of the things we talked about before, I had brought forward to the council some of the things. First, about a needs assessment. If we're going to move forward, process this, this need to have a need assessment will be a comprehensive assessment for our entire farming community. That would require a consultant if we choose to go that route. Currently, the town, as Jack can tell you, is all out right now. All of our boards and commissions are all out, are allowed. We'd have to bring in a consultant to really help run that. We just don't have the bandwidth right now to do that. Some of the things we did talk about, needs, some of the farmers had talked about, some of the needs are access to capital. We just, as a reminder, farmers that do have a Schedule F on their tax returns can assess the ARPA funding, the business grants that we are doing here in New Milford. You can go to www.nemilford.org, go to Community, go to ARPA. You can check out the business grants, or you can call the Mayor's Office and we can send you an application to do that. Also, in the state, there's the Farm Reinvestment Grant, which is a 50-50 match. That, you must have three years' experience, and those fundings go up to $40,000. There's a Farm Storage Facility Loan, which is the FSFL. That's a program to help small businesses, mid-sized fruit and vegetable producers. Access programs for cold storage and related equipment like wash and pack stations. Diversified and smaller fruit and vegetable producers, including CSAs, are now eligible for a waiver from the requirement that they carry crop insurance or NAPA coverage to apply for the FSL, FSL loan. Also, from the USDA, funding for producers is under the Micro Loan Program. And that is for small and mid-sized farmers. They can access up to $35,000 in loans and using a simplified application process. And, let's see, the, since the debut, since 2013, the USDA has issued more than 8,400 microloans, with 70% of these loans going to beginning farmers. There's also cost share support available for farmers pursuing organic certification. Organic farming can integrate cultural, biological, mechanical practices to bolster cycling of resources, promote ecological balance, conserve biodiversity. Small and mid-sized farmers are organic, or the FDA is ready to support those. One thing, if you're looking at some options, this is like a $500 grant that they give for the certification. This may be something at some point the council could take a look at, is maybe matching those funds as well, to help, you know, when it comes to the certification process. I'd also like to mention that I did speak with Mark Menken and Vin, who is our youth advocate through the Youth Agency, as we do the partnership with them when it comes to farming up at Sullivan Farms and some of the, some of the programs that we do. And of good note, we are now having some of our youth go back up there. I'm going to pull out some of the emails that I did get concerning, concerning some of the wonderful things that are going on up there. One was from the Girl Scouts, and they wanted to thank Sullivan Farm. They went up there and they did some exploring up on the, up on the farm itself, and were able to go through some of the trails, and were very excited about that. Had another group of a family come from, I believe it was, let me pull it up here, I believe it was Utah, they came and checked it out and was very pleasantly surprised at Sullivan Farm, which is great. So I did talk to Vinny, and one of the things they're looking to do is continue more of the educational component for Sullivan Farms for, for kids and families that are just coming there, not with a reservation, not anything else. So I asked Mark and I asked Vinny, what would that look like? If someone hadn't scheduled a tour but wanted to come up there, would we be able to provide some sort of learning activity for them? So they came up with, I asked Vincent Van Waddam, who's doing that. So he came up with kind of some numerical numbers for us. So he asked for, excuse me, soil test kits. He asked for five of those. That would be $134.45. A bacterial test kits, he asked for four of those. It's $91.84. A microscope, $99, one of them. Snowshoes, four of those, that'd be $179.96. A bug-catching tool, six of those, for $119.98. Small little excavators for the kids. He asked for two of those, $129.98. Sand toy trucks, $38.70. Binoculars, he asked for eight of those, $111.92. Paint set, $21.99. Picnic tables, they asked for four of them, which would be about $1,000, which came to $1,927.
And kids would be central to that.
Kids, be all kids. One of the things they talked about is growing Sullivan Farm for the kids. Kids growing, right, growing? So I asked Vin to kind of put it up there. So the goal that we're going to be doing for Sullivan Farm is increased growth through public support, guided and unguided tours, potential projects, which are going to be yurts, playground adventure teams, base building activities, balanced beam, trust fall platforms, increased signage, a history of New Milford Farms along the trails, trail maps, and they're looking to increase participation, obviously. Vin is actually calling the schools, actually calling homeschool children too, and other childcare providers to see if they want to come up to the farm.
Mayor, can I ask, is this, this is sort of in conjunction, because I was just talking about this. They have a program, it's an enrichment program, because of the kids for a couple of years not being able to-
Absolutely.
Be out and about, and we are concerned about their well-being, physically, mentally, that this is part of this enrichment outreach to give kids a chance to get outside. And it also, because COVID's gone, they can now go back to the agroeducation that was always-
I know one of the things that it'd been, as you said, Katie, has been difficult is the regular public schools with COVID, they, you know, and transportation has been very difficult. We're looking at this for next year, setting it up for next fall. So the targeted population are the public schools, not only New Milfords, but, you know, we had Danbury would come up, Newtown, looking at those. Adults, the guided tour with a trusted farm member to explain the operations, the homeschool population, where, I know they did blacksmithing a couple of weeks, weekends ago. It was packed, it was awesome. Science projects, space for classroom activities, partnering with Education Without Walls, enrichment activities, which could mean anything from read-alouds, painting, yoga cooking, planning, harvesting, geocaching, photography.
And they've applied for some funding for that through United Way.
I absolutely have.
So that's, they're already reaching out.
And, you know, again, you're talking about daycares, Girl and Boy Scouts groups, elderly potlucks, specific enrichment programs for our at-risk population. We're working closely with our social services team. And we have a jobs program, as I talked about, to the, to the council here before, our summer program. Some of those kids, they're sponsored through the summer program, actually work up at Sullivan Farm as well. And also, we're looking at additional grant funding as well. They're going to have a list of events and things of that nature as well. And also, speaking with Mark Menken, one of the things that he'd also is, is working on doing too, and I've asked him to come and present to the council as well, is working with that P3, Public Private Partnership, when it comes to Yukon, Non-Awog, when it comes to some of the other nonprofits that we spoke of a couple of weeks ago. They can come and present to our community about different ways of axo-farming, different ways of soil responsibility, how we take care of those things, and really use that kind of best-in-breed stuff. So I just wanted to bring that back up to the council. Anybody questions? Any comments?
No, I just have a comment. When you bring up Sullivan Farm, and we have quite a few CSAs. I think you mentioned there's a new, a new funding that's opened up for the CSA people. But the farm has been a source of education for kids in this town for a long, long time. And education, and Mark has always been there, but the agroeducation program, unfortunately, COVID kind of put a stop to that. But we've had graduates, I got to know them in working there, but these kids have all gone forward into different places, some into farming. But just the working at the farm, being there, has been a great experience. You know, really gave them insight into dealing with other people and how to take care of themselves, et cetera. So I, I'm glad to hear that it's going to continue. The, the thing that I think is lost a little bit in some of the conversations that have gone on here is that it, it appears to some people that we don't, we haven't had or never had or don't have backup and assistance for farmers and, and agroeducation and organic farming. When we have all of those in our town, and when some farmers said they didn't want to be, you know, told what to do or have too much oversight, I could, I don't blame them, because this is a farming town. If you look at all of the farmers that we have, and, and CSAs included, we have an opportunity for them to come and receive some help, financial help if they need it. And I receive still from the Sullivan Farm, friends of Sullivan Farm, all of the things from the government, the Connecticut, but mostly from the US government. And there are tons of grants and things out there for people. As you said, if you grow fruit trees, you can, you can apply. So I, I think it's probably more a matter of making sure that we distribute or get some of this information out that perhaps some smaller farmers don't know about these grants, because it, it comes because of the relationship with the farm. I, I'm sure Mark probably receives this. So perhaps we could take a step to getting, you know, publicizing that more to farmers. You know, add something on the town website about it, because you see them now, and I get them. And it, there are, there's tons of money, tons of money. So I think we could help that way.
You know, one comment on Sullivan Farm. If I'm not mistaken, I believe, you know, we talk about food sustainability in town, and that last year Sullivan Farm, I believe, donated-
Tons.
All the fruits and vegetables to the food banks that they could handle.
Yes, and more than they could handle.
Yeah, so they did a wonderful job. Yeah, so they did a wonderful job there. I mean, if we want to talk about how our farming community can work together with social services and senior center
They do.
to, you know, reduce food insecurity and that, great, but in terms of our farmers in town, I mean, I've talked to several, and, you know, I've heard a lot of discussion around here about mandates of farming or educating our farmers, I think our farmers are pretty well-educated into a lot of these techniques we're talking about.
Yes.
And in fact, they're doing a lot of them.
Yes.
When it makes sense on a crop for what they're, how much they're planning, they're doing a lot of, they might not be certified organic, but they're, and they're doing cover crops and things like that, they're doing it where it makes sense for them. So I'm really not in favor of putting anything else in place that's gonna, you know, educate them, because I think, I mean, many of these are second, third, fourth generation farmers.
Correct.
And, you know, I don't think they're by any means brainwashed by Big Ag or anything, they're doing, they're great stewards of the land here in town, and I think they do a wonderful job.
And I think there's an opportunity for new, I never want to negate anything new that comes along, because through the years, I mean, we now use a John Deere tractor and we're not, you know, pulling it with the oxen in front of it, so I wouldn't want to just poo-poo something that's new, so
Which will be Amish come to town, though?
But I think that, for instance, the regenerative and organic, which, some of that is done in this town, but I think if there's an opportunity to have that information and learning available, that's the kind of thing that could be done in a classroom style, just like the blacksmithing was done at Sullivan Farm or other places, right? So, so it doesn't need to be an overarching change, it's something that those who have the capacity and have the, want to learn about it, or maybe need to learn about it, maybe it's just something they've never heard of, that they can go and find out about it, because it is important that we pay attention to things that are healthier, better for everybody, and better for the land, et cetera. I don't think any of us poo-poo that at all, and I certainly know our farmers don't, so I think it's a way to be able to have, to have them meld together. I just, some of this assistance, the education assistance, I think that we would, should look at that as it, as it comes to us on a case-by-case basis, if somebody, if Hillary had a way of hydroponic, we've had this in the past, those tower gardens that Ham had, you know, bring that, we had them here in the town hall, you know, I don't mean you would have that, but it's, but no one's closed to understanding or trying to learn new things. I just think that it kind of took a little bit of a trajectory that it didn't need to take, but I'm glad we talked about it, and I think that you've located and talked about a lot of things that are out there for people, and we should all
They're already available.
Right, they are available and easy to find. The USDA is filled with it.
Several points that I'd like to make. We can never, ever get enough education in any areas, including farming, so we don't want to close that door. New Milford schools send students to the agricultural school, and every year we have more students asking to be in there for the sake of being farmers than our school district is willing to spend money on, so we're not getting where we need to be for those young people who want to be in farming.
But they do come to Sullivan Farm to do their work.
I, yeah, but it's not education in agricultural high school, which is in high demand
No, but it's where they go to do their
I'm not here to argue with you, Katie, I'm still talking.
No, I'm not arguing, I'm just letting you know, that's where they go.
The next thing is, we don't, we don't have enough seats for agricultural school. Changing and farming is complex, and we probably do need some, some help and some consulting in it
Really?
in our modern day, yes, because we depend on more chemicals. You might be the expert farmer, and we'll put you up there, Katie, but let me speak.
I'm not.
Let me speak, please?
I'm not stopping you.
So, it is complex, it's become a very difficult area to learn to get better yields and better crops, and interesting statistic, and I don't know how relevant it is, about organic farming, it's, it's important, I don't know how big we can get in the United States, it'll never be big enough. New York Times ran an article the other day where young women now hit their menstrual cycle at 12 as compared to 14. You have to wonder if what we eat is a factor in that. Read the articles, the New York Times.
I did.
So, I'm speaking to the public, Katie, not you.
Well, you were looking at me, so I thought you wanted to know.
I looked at everybody. Please, let me finish, and then the floor is all yours. So, we can't sell ourselves short on more information, more education, we have a great farming community here in this town, but we should not shut the door or shut down people that have different and interesting ways of doing things, and that's why we need to keep it open and, and focus on what we are still considered a farming town.
I agree with you, Joe, I think we're in violent agreement, I said exactly the same, I'm not disputing anything you say.
I was just gonna say, I agree with a lot of what's been said, and I just think that if there were some way to bridge, we have one of the best organic farms in the country, right here in New Milford, doing the, you know, great stuff, but if there were some way to bridge, and it's not educating or mandating farmers, but it's to say, wow, let's, let's, let's investigate the best pesticide for pumpkins, is it DE, what do they call it, domestic earth, it's actually, you know, or is it the chemical? And you have these, so if the farmers can't afford to get to the more sustainable regenerative place, if we had this, this crutch to bring them there, right, so if they say, we can't, we can't invest right now in the new tractor, or we can't invest in this new pesticide that's organic, because we just don't, we don't have the budget, so that's what this was sort of intended to be, was that, that bridge to get them to the place where maybe it's even a more effective way of farming. So that, that was sort of the intention there, and I think that that should still be, and I regret that it's not, more inclusive in our, of our town commissions, like the, you know, the Farmland Forest Preservation Commission, they might have been the ones to distribute these funds, you know, to be the ones to set up the language and the inclusivity with all the farms and say, you know, how can we as a town be more sustainable? Because if you look at the POCD, that was a big request of much of our public, is they want us to protect water, they want us to protect the soils and the farms, so why not, why not be that bridge?
But do you think a legislative body, I'm sorry, Chris, I'm so buttered for a second, just because Hillary and I were kind of in the same thing here, but do you think that a legislative body like the town council is the process? I think the farmers do talk to each other, right? So by talking about it here, we brought it out to the public in general, and that's why I said the, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Martin?
Marzus Russo.
Yeah, Russo, right, that what they talk about, the regenerative process and the organic, is just something that maybe some of our farmers haven't had the time or the financial wherewithal to take, it's usually time, I think, so I think that would be great, but I don't see how the town council plays a role in like being, structuring it, other than saying, hey, you know, let's farmland preservation, I'm sorry that somebody couldn't be here to talk with us, but they are really, as you say, that, that's the perfect place it should start, they should reach out and make a collaborative group.
Chris?
The, thank you. The proposal that's on the table, though, here, and I am in favor of organic farming, lack of elimination of pesticides and all of these wonderful things, but we're talking about a request from a group that I really don't know, that's not one of the trusted nonprofits or agencies that we have funded over the last year and a half. I have no set plan on where the money is going, and if you're telling me that we're going to overcome bad pesticides with $150,000, I'm gonna laugh, because it's, there's, there's not enough money that we can put out there in any budget the next five years that's gonna overcome some of the bigger issues that we're talking about. You have to add like five zeros to that number to get to where you want to go to fix this, okay? I'm all in favor of it, okay? I, I get it, I'm a, I'm a conservation guy, I get it, right? But $150,000 is going where and to who and why? We established eight, X amount of millions of dollars to groups that we've had a very, very long history with, that put a plan in front of us, not just, I want to get into organic farming, or I need some education. This is not seed money for people that want to start businesses, the Economic Development Corporation is there, the USDA is there, there's microloans for people who want to get into business, I'm an entrepreneur, I support that, okay? I'll come and buy this stuff from your farm, all right? But this isn't, this isn't, these are not the funds for this particular, you know, broad stroke, we're gonna save the planet and save farming mission, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's literally an eyedropper in Candlewood Lake, it's a drop of water in an ocean that we're asking for $150,000, and we've been talking about this for I don't know how many months, and had multiple presentations, and we've been going through this. I think we have to bring this thing to a conclusion here tonight, whether we're gonna go forward or we're gonna stop this. I'm gonna vote in favor of stopping this tonight. I, I think this should be the last and final discussion, let's make a vote, we've talked at this thing ad nauseam, we understand all the benefits, but the reality, $150,000 is not gonna do it, and it's not our charge to take this money and help seed new businesses, that's not, that's not our charge here.
Yeah, I mean, about the POCD, I was on, and Councilman Esposito was on as well.
Myself.
Yep, and Councilman Francis, who developed the POCD. There was no discussion in that POCD about methods of farming, and there's, and there's a reason for that, because, and I would also say, you know, talk about organic farming, and we should be there, there's multiple kinds of farming, and for certain crops and certain acreage and that sort of thing, different methods make sense, but at the end of the day, the people that will end up pushing the decisions on what kind of farming are the people, the consumers in this town. If they all want organic, they know where to get it, and if they don't, they can go somewhere else, and that's why they choose to do it. So in a free market, to me, that makes sense, and in terms of researching best pesticides and that, I mean, that's just, that's a whole lot of money, that's millions of dollars, and we're never gonna do that, and, and as Councilman Esposito said, the plan in front of us, I think not only tries to tell farmers how to farm, if you read this, it will say, it's my copy, will say, tell them what to plant, so not how to farm, even what to farm, and, and to me, that's, that's just, is not what we're here for, it's not what I would vote for.
Mr. Mayor, you had sent some questions to the group, would you like to hear the answers to those questions?
Absolutely.
So is it okay if the group answers the questions?
Before we have other people get involved, I just want to say something, Hillary made a very good point about something, and I think as Tom said, that we have a farmland preservation group, and for a long time, right? So this is something that if we wanted to ask someone to take the bigger picture look of how to bring people together, some who may not care to be part of it, some who might not know how to collaborate or know about some of these things, or how to take the first step, they don't have the time, to me, we have a group, it's been here for a long time, why don't we just ask them to, to go forward, because it really isn't something that the council would do, is to gather people together like that, why don't we ask the farmland preservation, Mr. Kleppin, et cetera, and have them, you know, and we have, we have a farm right here that the town owns, that's been doing all of this for a long time, we have an organic farmer, as you know, as you bring it, it's a great farmer, why not, you know, let them get together and figure out the way that they, as farmers, would want to have options, and then, you know, we kind of have a way to start a look at it without having to beat our heads together here.
Why are we discussing this for so many weeks and we can't get farmland preservation here? Do they not respect the council enough to show up?
They'll be here at the next meeting.
Yeah, I just think they also find that this is a, this is beyond what, you know, this is beyond what they should be asked for.
We've asked for them to be here, and they have not for weeks now.
But they don't have to be.
Well, nobody has to be here unless we ask them to inform us.
Yeah, but we're discussing with them. How do they do the business?
I'll ask the chairman, Mr. Kleppin.
But they're also, but listen, farmland preservation is a, is a, is a land trust encouragement group, they're there to take farms and put them into land trusts, that is farmland preservation, for the most part, land trusts, and then turn them into, obviously, continue them as active farms, right? That's, that's, that's their, their
They're closer to dealing with something that has
The closest they did was about eight or nine years ago, after I made the suggestion at an economic development meeting, that instead of trying to just save the farms, let's try to save the farmer first, and they put on a big symposium, which went incredibly well, every kid in town that was part of a farming family, who is now accelerating their farms, like the Kimberleys and others, were in that meeting, and that meeting brought families together to see other family farms, just like the March Farm up in Bethlehem, when the gentleman said to all of the older, the families, trust your children, make some investments in your kids, some are gonna win, some are gonna lose, but that's the future of your farm, and that's what they've done. So I don't disagree with bringing farmland in, but they don't, also are an authoritative body, or
I don't think we bring them in, I don't think we
We don't need to, the fact here is, we've got a proposal on the table for $150,000 that's telling us, or at least 150 grand, that, a request for ARPA funds, that we're gonna save the entire world and create an entire Mecca of organic, organic farming here in New Milford on $150,000 seed money for new organic farmers, that's what you're telling me. These are people that are not in the business
I don't know who's telling you that.
Excuse you, you're not, you're really not here to speak?
We're not, but we're not telling you.
Excuse me, Mr. Carranta, this is not a meeting for you, as the Sergeant of Arms, I can ask you to leave.
Sit down.
If I call the cops on you now, they're gonna take you out of the room, as the Sergeant of Arms, as the Sergeant of Arms
Please leave the room, as the Sergeant of Arms, leave the room, Mr. Carranta, leave the room, leave the room.
What you're saying is not true, I mean, all of this is so crazy. It's not for seconds now. It's just
I leave the room, I leave the room.
All of our farmers are fighting
911 is getting the floor right now.
911, 911.
I'm dialing 911, you can't, you step away from
I'm not breaking any laws, I'm not breaking any laws.
Okay. All right, everybody, let's take a deep breath. Okay.
They called the police on you, I know, if you're listening, they called the police on us.
Joe.
No, I'm not gonna be long, it's ridiculous. I can't, I called 911 because I speak in a meeting? That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard in my life.
I'd like to call a question on this, please, and get this over with, this, this has been going on for months, on a charade of people that I have no trust for, no trust. Mr. Carranta, if I were you, if I were you, I'd get out of the building before the police come here and ask you to leave.
And as for the grants
Okay, we're gonna call, yeah, recess.
I'm calling for a five-minute recess.
Just one sec.
Five-minute recess.
Please, let's just
Leave the room.
We can all calm down.
Leave the room.
Mr. Russo, just take a, take a recess.
Take a recess, can I take a recess? No, we're gonna call a question here, there's no more discussions on this.
Yes, five-minute recess.
We've spoken five minutes in a row, we're done with this, I'm done.
We're just doing a recess, so everybody, Mr. Russo, Mr. Russo, we're just, we're just doing a recess, so everybody can just be calm, that's all.
The mayor said yes just before, this all
Well, we definitely had an escalation of things, so you'll just wait a few minutes and they can come back.
We're gonna do a five-minute recess, everybody can calm down.
I'll take your office after my, mayor.
Thank you.
Are all the microphones off, Mike?
All of the, they're in recess.
Yeah, we're in recess.
Yeah, we're in recess.
Thank you, Joe. Next, moving on, we had one of the public, we had some questions that wanted to be answered. Councilman Thomas had asked, so if we could bring them up?
Right, okay. These were questions, Mr. Mayor, that you had sent with regard to this issue.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sent to whom? I'm sorry.
Sent, sent to me to forward to the group, so that they could come with some of the details that you all were asking.
Oh, I see. Okay.
But Mayor Bass sent them, so that they could come...
I was away, I guess. I don't remember.
Okay, just curious.
So, yeah, there were some questions that were, that wanted to be asked, and, you know, a lot of people said, you know, we don't understand where this money is going. I think many times, you know, we, we've laid it out. 15,000 would be to education. A big bulk, bulk of it would be to helping farmers make the transition to, to organic and regenerative farming. And then, 30, 35,000 would be for the voucher system, to help specifically seniors and families in need get access seven days a week to, to organic, healthy, chemical-free food, not just on the Saturdays at the farmer's market. So, that's, you know, and we believe 150,000 will do a lot. You know, I've heard a lot of people say, you know, what is 150,000 going to do? What is 150,000 going to do? Well, it's, it's a start, you know. It's, it's a big start, you know. You know, you could provide a no-till drill for every town, every farm in this town, at like 10,000 on average. Every, every farm could have a no-till drill. You know, you could probably feed half the town by deploying sock farms and other types of farms. So, we believe that it would do a lot. But I'll tell you what 150,000 is not going to do, and that's nothing. Which, it seems like a lot of people, or some people on this council want to do about this, and that's nothing. And I don't really think that's the right approach.
Questions?
Oh, more questions. Timeline, I mean, this could be done almost immediately. It could be done, you know, within 30 to 45 days of the funds, you know, being distributed. We could start, start immediately, you know. Take advantage of Sullivan Farm, take advantage of the town, you know, deploy a sock farm.
I just have a question. When you say "we," I missed the meeting when this came up, I guess. When you say "we," you mean you would be the person doing this?
Well, I mean, we have, you know, we have a bunch of people behind us, and the town, the town itself.
No, we want to utilize the town farm.
But, I, okay. But, I mean, just back a minute. So when you say "we" in, in the same sentence with 150,000, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, yeah, all right. So we can scroll down to...
Who gets 150,000 dollars, and who decides?
Question four.
Who?
Question four would be, what were the plans for verification of these funds, and how would they be appropriated? We, we don't have an answer for that. Utilizing something like the Farmland and Forest Preservation Committee, and creating a different committee so that those funds could go there and be used in conjunction with...
Okay.
Outside organizations, and, and, and really, we do like the Farmland and Forest Preservation Committee to utilize that space. But no, we're not asking for 150,000 dollars to be deposited into any of our accounts.
That's right. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the town, you know, the town would...
Ashley Russo.
The town would do this, it would be a collaborative effort, you know what I mean? There was another question, is this for New Milford residents only? And the answer to that would just simply be yes, you know. It would be for, for town residents, town farmers. The education part of it, certainly if, if somebody else from another town wanted to come and learn about this, then we would say, I would say, you know, yeah. But as far as the funding goes, you know, it would just be for New Milford farmers and for New Milford residents.
I just want to add to the education piece. I understand that the town farm has got all of these already pretty awesome, amazing structures in place. This is just another thing to add to that. Another whole entire, it's like a whole nother program that they would be able to offer there with the funds, or to be able to support it. So, I mean, I think that that's a really, especially for my generation of people, this is extremely important. And going through COVID, and watching all the people in my class specifically, again, I'm a graduate of New Milford, go out and buy chickens, and start farms, and, or start gardens in their house, and, and all of these really cool back-to-nature types of things, but on the level of organics, because we're the generation with children that are affected by things like autism and ADD, in a, in a really big way. This is really important to, to a lower generation of people. And to have to go elsewhere, to have to drive to Whole Foods, to have to go to other farmer's markets, is really a big problem. We have this town, we should be able to utilize it as best we can in this avenue, the way that it, it needs to be, and the way that the demand is asking for. Because I know so many people that drive down to Whole Foods, and have to go elsewhere for produce that's, that's more affordable, you can get more, and it's, it's just cleaner.
Do you have proof of concept of what you're saying?
The public, if we feel necessary, and I don't think we're ever going to be able,
Do I have proof of, I have clients that I can bring in here that I can, that I take off of. I don't understand.
Do you have proof of concept? Like, you're saying you're going to help the town? It's a noble idea, that's what we're trying to do. And you're saying, so how many people you think you can feed, or help with? And do you think your prices of the organic, well, first of all, it's organic, and that's, that's a different discussion. So you're saying that your, the prices of this healthy product is going to be lower than the Whole Foods in Denver?
Well, setting up something like a community garden...
We have those already.
At the town farm?
We have, we have gardens up towards...
No, but I'm saying that we have access to, that we could just go to and utilize the space.
You asked me a question right now. So that's, that's, I know, I know the technique.
Well, I'm trying to, I understand where you're coming from.
Right. So, you're saying that your produce, the product you're trying to come up with is going to be healthier, and it's going to be comparable cheaper than Whole Foods? That's what you just said.
Sure, yeah.
Would you have a proof, proof of concept of that?
Well, it's logic. It doesn't have to be shipped in from Mexico. It's, it's grown right here.
Are you saying that Mexico is not producing good products?
So, you, you get seeds that are pennies?
Yeah, I think so.
And you can, you can produce...
I just, I just want to refresh everybody's memory. We keep talking about the town farm, particularly the Sullivan Farm.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is, this is what Sullivan Farm is about. Sullivan Farm is a vocational, educational, agricultural center that benefits local youth by providing marketable skills through hands-on involvement in 21st century farming and agribusiness practices. It also provides opportunities for schoolchildren to reconnect with New England's rich agricultural heritage, and learn about the benefits of healthy, fresh, and locally grown produce. Sullivan Farm, through its programs, strives to provide a place to expand youth awareness of their relationship with the environment. And what I'm hearing a lot is, well, we're going to do adults, and, and they're going to come in there. And if there's any thought of that, that's, to me, is a significant change to what Sullivan Farm is about. And we would have to have significant discussions with youth advocacy.
There has been some change in the, in the scope. But I will say, what you asked about people coming and farming, or you did, Sal, that was done. Actually, seniors were going to do it as well. And the, when the farm went with Mark there, and, and being there full-time, it was COVID, really, that stopped that from, from happening, because there is space there. There's an insurance thing comes into play, but, you know, it's, it's been talked about, and kids having their phone bills.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, start with the kids. I mean, that's where it's got to start from.
But again, this is something that, you know, we...
The kids are the next generation, so I mean, if it's only kids, then I mean...
I think, I think one thing, though, that I, I don't know if we do something like this already, but there was something in the proposal about food vouchers.
Yes, we do.
And, we do that already?
Yes, we do.
I thought we did, okay.
Yes, and that's, that's just, just, that's just a little thing that I can explain to you, why it couldn't, it would be almost impossible to do seven days a week, because people don't have the transportation, farmers are not open to allow people to come in like that. And we do have a voucher system that works in the town now for seniors, and for those who are food insecure to, you know, any degree, really.
Right.
And there has been an overabundance of fresh food provided to this, to these two areas, or other areas, because so many people grew things and gave them to them. And we, of course, have the farmer's market as well, as you know.
Right.
So, it's a, it's a good idea, it's a lofty idea to look at a way to expand it. I just think seven days is high.
Well, I mean, just, you know, farm...
During open business hours, when they have open store hours.
It's just a matter of people getting there, that's the thing.
Mike?
I'm beginning to move us along, but I just want to give a quick comment. And, you know, I'm a member of two CSAs, and it's a big part of my, and unfortunately, in the winter, we have to find other places to get our vegetables, because we have a small window where we run out. So I am very into the organic movement. I almost just feel like the, the order of events here is wrong. And in most cases, people come to us, they've already started some form of a nonprofit to create and have a track record in saying, this is what we're doing, here's our game plan, we have a board of directors that decides this stuff. And they come to us, you know, Katie, on that committee where they come and say, this is what we're doing, and we're going to ask for some money. And I think that's what we're missing here, is, is there's no track record for us to know if this is going to be a well-spent 150,000. And that's where I'm having trouble with it. The concepts are great, you know, you know, raising 150 grand, if you feel it's a good concept, you know, there's events that raise, raise close to that money a night with some of the nonprofits. And I think that's the way to do it, is, is kind of create your structure, and then come back to us, and maybe it won't be the ARPA money, but there, there might be money in some of the nonprofit budget we can look at later. That's what I, but, you know, it's nine o'clock, we still have a bunch of things we got to get to, so we got to move.
Any other, any other comments?
So, there's a motion, I'm not sure if the motion is going to be...
Well, I just want, no, I just, is there more to your...
No, that was all. Thank you for letting us be able to speak. We answered your questions.
I appreciate all the things you've come to say about it.
So, I guess I'd like to make a motion.
There's a motion on the floor.
We have a motion.
And what is it?
To discuss and have possible action. I don't know.
Right. So I guess I would like to discuss the possible actions.
Okay, we have no, we have no funds on here. This was just to talk about distribution, and farmers, and farmer education were capitalized. So I said, I don't know, is that the insurance company?
I guess my suggestion for action wouldn't necessarily entail any funds.
You need to change the action.
Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to withdraw my motion. I'm going to withdraw my motion, and the second...
I think you're going to want some...
And, okay.
All right.
You can make a motion, Sal.
Okay. So my motion would be that, you know, out of all the discussion we've had over the past several months, that I would move that we look to farmland preservation to work with senior center and social services, to see if there's anything better, if they can come up with a plan for food insecurity in town, and we, they consider if the potential exists for extending, expanding the voucher plan.
I have, I have a...
Can you repeat that, please?
I just, I just, can I just, somebody second that, so I can discuss?
Second.
I think starting it with farm...
Can somebody repeat that motion, please?
Yep.
Just a second. Starting it with farmland is just going against what we just all said. I think that the people, that, take the Russos, and some of the other people who want to do this, that they should go to the farmland preservation people, and talk to them about it, and then come back with whatever they feel they need some funding for. Because we shouldn't be telling, we should not, we're legislators, remember that?
Yep, okay, I get you.
So, you know, it'd be like my telling you what to do.
Okay. Okay, I withdraw the motion.
And that's, yeah.
I'll draw my second.
Okay.
I mean, do you guys think that makes some sense, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you?
I have an application at the Farmland and Forest Preservation, so...
Okay.
Joe?
I'd like to see, in the future, people like the Russos appear before some of these organizations we have, to get your input. You know, you are well-spoken, and, and you're well-involved, and that's the kind of thing we appreciate.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. So, I just want to remind people, with climate going to do it as well, and when the farm went with Mark there and and being there full time, it was COVID really that stopped that from from happening, because there is space there. There's an insurance thing comes into play, but, you know, it's it's been talked about, and kids having their phone bills.
Yeah, that's great, I mean, start with the kids, I mean, that's where it's gotta start from.
But again, this is something that, you know, we.
The kids are the next generation, so I mean, if it's only kids, then I mean.
I think, I think one thing, though, that I, I don't know if we do something like this already, but there was something in the proposal about food vouchers.
Yes, we do.
And we do that already?
Yes, we do.
I thought we did, okay.
Yes, and that's, that's just, that's just a little thing that I can explain to you why it couldn't, it would be almost impossible to do seven days a week, because people don't have the transportation, farmers are not open to allow people to come in like that. And we do have a voucher system that works in the town now for seniors and for those who are food insecure to, you know, any degree, really. And there has been an overabundance of fresh food provided to this, to these two areas or other areas, because so many people grew things and gave them to them. And we, of course, have the farmer's market as well, as you know. So it's a, it's a good idea, it's a lofty idea to look at a way to expand it, I just think seven days is high.
Well, I mean, just as, you know, farm.
During open business hours, when they have open store hours.
It's just a matter of people getting there, that's the thing.
Mike?
I'm beginning to move us along, but I just wanted to make a comment, and I, and you know, I'm a member of two CSAs and it's a big part of my, unfortunately, in the winter we have to find other places to get our vegetables, because we have a small window where we run out. So I am very into the organic movement. I almost just feel like the the order of events here is wrong, and in most cases, people come to us, they've already started some form of a nonprofit to create and have a track record and saying, this is what we're doing, here's our game plan, we have a board of directors that decides this stuff, and they come to us, you know, Katie, on that committee where they come and say, this is what we're doing, and we're gonna ask for some money. And I think that's what we're missing here is is there's no track record for us to know if this is gonna be a well-spent $150,000, and that's where I'm having trouble with it. The concepts are great, you know, raising 150 grand, if you feel it's a good concept, you know, there's events that raise that, raise close to that money in a night with some of the nonprofits. And I think that's the way to do it, is is kind of create your structure and then come back to us, and maybe it won't be the arper money, but there there might be money in some of the nonprofit budget we can look at later, that's what I, but, you know, it's nine o'clock, we still have a bunch of things we gotta get to, so we gotta keep moving.
Any other, any other comments?
So, there's a motion, I'm not sure if the motion is going to be.
Well, I just want, no, I just, is there more to your?
No, that was all, thank you for letting us be able to speak, we answered your questions.
I appreciate all the things you've come to say about it.
So, I guess I'd like to make a motion.
Can there's a motion on the floor?
We have no.
And what is it?
To discuss and have possible action, I don't know.
Right, so I guess I would like to discuss the possible actions.
Okay, we have no, we have no funds on here, this was just to talk about distribution and farmers and farmer education were capitalized, so I said, I don't know, is that the insurance?
I guess my suggestion for action wouldn't necessarily entail any funds.
You need to change the action.
Here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna withdraw my motion, I'm gonna withdraw my motion, and the second, and, okay.
All right.
You can make a motion now.
Okay, so my motion would be that, you know, out of all the discussion we've had over the past several months, that I would move that we look to farmland preservation to work with senior center and social services to see if there's anything better, if they can come up with a plan for food insecurity in town, and we, they consider if the potential exists for extending, expanding the voucher plan.
I have, I have a, I just, I just, can I just, somebody second that, so I can discuss?
Second.
I think starting it with farm.
Could somebody repeat that motion, please?
Yep.
Just a second.
Okay.
Starting it with farmland is just going against what we just all said. I think that the people, that, take the Russo's and some of the other people who want to do this, that they should go to the farmland preservation people and talk to them about it, and then come back with whatever they feel they need some funding for, because we shouldn't be telling, we should not, we're legislators, remember that?
Yep, okay, I get you.
So, you know, it'd be like my telling you what to do.
Okay, okay, I withdraw the motion.
And that's, yeah.
I'll draw my second.
Okay.
I mean, do you guys think that makes some sense, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you?
I have an application at the farmland preservation, so.
Okay.
Joe?
I'd like to see, in the future, people like the Russo's appear before some of these organizations we have, to get your input. You know, you are well-spoken and and you're well-involved, and that's the kind of thing we appreciate.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. So, I just wanna remind people, with climate change and the droughts that are going on across the country, the fires that are, you're saying Nebraska's on fire now, they have numerous wildfires going that they've never had at this time of year before, and the floods all over the country, the Russo's are absolutely right in that we need to reform how we do our agricultural practices, so that we can do things locally and better quality and get rid of a lot of the chemicals that have been fostered on by Monsanto and some of the other big chemical, Dow Chemical companies. And, you know, by doing it locally, you reduce a lot of air pollution, because you're not trucking things in, you're not, you know, bringing things in from California, you can grow your own veggies and whatever else that's seasonal here, anyway. But we need to think about, and and this is coming, and and I think, I think our vision here is a little parochial about, you know, how we're gonna change agricultural practices, because here's the bottom line, it has to change, and it's going to change, whether you like it or not, it is absolutely going to be changing. So I I think a lot of you just haven't had the opportunity to be listening to a lot of the experts that are talking about this, but that's one of the pieces that I think we can bring into this community and bring the experts in, and use as an educational piece to get people to start looking at other ways to farm.
Right.
So thank you to the Russo's for bringing this proposal in, because I I think it's absolutely critical, and many people across the country believe it's critical at this point, too.
So we take no action on this item? Okay?
Next up?
Item 11, economic development update.
Very quick update, because I know we still have two executive sessions to go to. So we are seeing continued growth in our economic development, our permits, our processes. Just a couple of quick sidebars, the 1840 house down on Bank Street, she has a couple more things to get through as far as the process, and then she will be open. Across the street, next door to Play, is going to be a vintage shop, so it'll be like sneakers you can buy, old concert shirts and whatnot, those things are happening, yeah. Oh, well, I know, can you believe it? I know. Looking early.
Frank Sinatra was vintage.
Right. Seeing some additional interest when it comes to developing housing, when it comes to Danbury Road, where you have three retail prads, 151 units, that's looking like there may be some additional activity there. Also by the New Milford Police Department, I believe it's 57 units, that's going to be going in there. So there's some strong demand, you have the ones that are by Lanesville Avenue there, that's 830G, I believe that's 37 units, right, Randy, I think it is, around there. On Boardman Bridge, there's 12, I think 12 or 17 units that are being worked on as we speak now. And then up on Route 202, which was the old Vince, what do they call it now, Riverwalk? That's affordable, single-family housing as well. So I'll kind of stop there, as I know we're getting short of time.
May I have a question, that's been asked by many, asked of me by many people, I asked you about this, but I'd like you to say it out loud, so they stop asking me. What happened to Popeyes? They're not here.
Yes, so Popeyes did not continue in New Milford, because Connecticut Department of Transportation wasn't quick enough in getting curb-cut approvals. And let me be very clear, the town in New Milford's approvals were already done this past fall. So this had nothing to do with congestion, this had nothing to do with congestion of the town.
Right, okay.
This had more of a state and a state DOT issue.
And Popeyes didn't want to wait?
Right.
For the state?
Right.
Well, so we suffer. Thank you, Connecticut. Item B, discussion and possible action on creating cultural districts, that was to be plural in New Milford.
So just for the town council, just to try and get, thank you, just a kind of your guys' thought process on this, right now Ridgefield was the first district, cultural district to do one, Torrington, and now New London is doing one. Culture, a cultural district, for those that don't know and those that are watching, the Department of Economic Community Development, including the Office of the Arts and the Office of Tourism and the designated regional service organizations, are committed to supporting the formation, development, establishment of cultural districts. All above agencies can provide additional marketing and whatnot. What is a cultural district? It's a way of where we can show our support and our community's wherewithal that we support the arts and culture, especially within that district. Some of the things that we need to do to be a cultural district is we have to establish the cultural district, we need a letter of endorsement from the mayor, a copy of the resolution from the city council, which is our town council, a list of cultural district commissioners and their relevant role and categories per representation guidelines, a master map of what we envision a cultural district to be, the list of municipal resources that would support and benefit a cultural district, zoning documents, overlaps and ordinances relative to a cultural district. What else does it need to be? It needs to be a municipality in the state of Connecticut, must have defined boundaries, must be walkable and accessible, must have cultural facilities and assets, should have public infrastructure and amenities, and must hold at least one community input meeting in order for people to learn more about the proposed cultural district. The municipality must vote to approve a cultural district by passing a resolution following the community input. And the municipality must form a cultural district commission, and the cultural district must meet requirements of cultural district definition. And why I bring all this stuff up, it's kind of a lengthy process, I think it's a great endeavor for the town of New Milford.
Me, too.
Hopefully you guys do, too.
This is the first step in the process.
This is the first step.
So I have a question, everything there is great, I'm ticking off my head all these places, there's one word, and I don't know who came up with this and what the oversight they have, but you said walkable. Now, we are the largest town in the state, and I immediately was thinking of going up Route 202, we have, we have an art, like right in Park Lane, we've got a guy who's got a great art gallery, you go up, you go towards the Silo and Hunt Hill Farm, it's, you know, you could walk, but it'd be tough to bring the painting home from there. So how, how much are we, do we have to adhere to that? Just one item.
That'd be a great question that we would ask, ask Department of Economic Development?
Ours?
No, state.
Oh, okay.
But you said cultural districts.
Yes.
So downtown could be one, where it's walkable, obviously over to the theater and downtown.
Right, but we don't want to.
And there could be another node, just like we described years ago, the Silo node.
Well, that's the point, but walkable, meaning, they say boundaries, you set the boundaries, and that's why we were talking, we're so spread out.
Well, I also think what they deem walkable maybe is the district itself walkable.
Right.
So for instance, New London did the whole town, New London.
Right.
Yeah.
This is our district.
And Torrington just in one area?
I believe so.
I don't know, well, they have a bigger downtown.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, this is great, so who are we gonna ask to work on this?
Well, what we need to do first is just get the assessment from the town, from the town council to go ahead and move forward this, and then I'll ask some people.
Oh, right.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's something to pursue, okay, great.
Should we vote on it, at least that we are in?
Yes, yes. So, all in favor?
What's the, what's the motion?
The motion is the, to approve creating a cultural, cultural, not a, creating cultural districts in New Milford.
Second.
Chris seconded it, though.
Chris seconded it.
Yes, so that's.
Any discussion?
Give me a third.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Great.
Next is the discussion on possible action on leasing of Hunt Hill Farm to Bullseye Farm LLC. And I had spoken with the owner of Bullseye Farm, and then today, a little bit after five o'clock, I had spoken with town attorney Randy DeBella, and we had another party who was, back in December, who was looking at the lease itself through Weantinog, right, Randy?
Yeah, the lease that was tendered, apparently, I wasn't involved in that, I didn't even know about it, by the way, the lease that was tendered is different than the lease that that I had prepared for the previous tenant, and the current iteration of that. Apparently, back in November, Weantinog, now Northwest, had been engaged in discussions with an individual, a very competent and a responsible individual, but didn't tell me. They sent a copy of a proposed specifications for bidding, which I objected to because of the language in it, and I never heard anything since then. And the latest I heard today, at about 5:15, from Mayor Bass, is that in fact, he was told that Weantinog, now Northwest, had had a, had a, at least a tentative deal with another individual that we were never told about.
But there's no, there's no draft to it at all?
No, there's no draft.
But purpose of town property.
So to make, so to make, so to make it, a long story short, to get you all the information together, I would like for this to be tabled to the next meeting, so I can get it all to you guys in the proper form, so it's fair to Bullseye, who's here tonight, it's fair to everybody, to Andrew, it's fair to everybody. So I just want to make sure everybody's got all the information that they have, so we'll move that for the next meeting. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
All right, item D, I'd like to move to set the date for a public hearing for Monday, May 23, 2022, at 6:45, for an ordinance change regarding the migration of all newly hired non-union employees, that would be as of July 1, 2022, to the 401A plan.
This is, thank you, this is brought forward to the town council prior, and this is just part of the process as we move forward to this. Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? I would like to add something to the agenda, and it'll be quick, Joe, I promise, real quick.
You have an E, don't forget.
What?
You have an E, don't forget.
You have an E?
Yes, right.
Eleven E.
We have eleven E, which is, was added on, we suspended the rules to add, this has to do with the, with Hillary's request.
Okay, I'll do this after Hillary's request.
Okay, so item 11E is a discussion on the role, is it the role of the, or, it has to do with our videographer and town videos?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just leave it there.
Yeah, I think it's been a brutal night, so I'm pretty beaten up to get into this right now, but I think that the problem that I'm hearing from some residents is that it's intimidating to come speak and be videoed from lots of angles and then have it be spread all over social media, on, on, the videographer also has a big social platform, social media platform. So the question is, I think it's a great service that these meetings are recorded and everyone can watch them later, live, you know, it's a great service and he does it very well. The question is then, you know, the town owns that video, right, and so it's not really fair that it then gets spun off into a very.
Yeah, but it's a public domain.
Well.
So Randy, to answer Hillary's first, I don't wanna call it question, but just, you have something that's a recorded public document, is that, is that protected?
It's a public record, it is a public record, yeah. Under the definition of, under Freedom Information Act, Section 1-210, as a matter of fact, that becomes in and of itself a public record.
So if somebody wanted to grab it and share it, they could do that, because it's?
They can, I mean, you could admonish them.
It's on, like, it's on YouTube every single meeting we have for the town.
Not many people know how to just go in and record and take it and put it on Facebook, but this, the person who's doing the filming also has a whole social media, I mean, you know, it's a bit of a conflict of interest, I think people are a bit, you know, it's a chilling effect to have people come to the town council and then be really.
So the use of the video outside of its intention, which is to provide information for the public, is what the issue is.
Yeah, I mean, maybe public participation shouldn't be recorded by video.
That's a suppression of freedom of speech, I mean.
I think there's just a couple issues, recording is fine. I think if I'm incorrect, Hillary, tell me, I think what you're saying is it shouldn't be chopped up and used for another reason on another media or through another medium for political purposes.
By the town employee.
By the, by.
Who's filming it.
That's, that's what her concern is.
Yeah.
But the, the property, the actual film, or I should say video, I'm dating myself, is public, it's a public record.
Right.
So, if I'm so inclined, I could use it, you could use, anyone can use it.
Anybody can. Once it hits YouTube, you can cut it up and slice it up and use it for any political message you want.
Yeah.
And it's on, and it's on there right now, so as we're speaking, somebody could be doing this.
But they don't necessarily get, necessarily get slander protection. So if they, if they take a piece of video and they make something out of it for a different motive, and it doesn't elicit or doesn't show what the, the language was or what the the item was, in order to, to, by innuendo, slander somebody, that's, they're not protected. They've used that piece, but they're still not protected under the law of defamation if they slander somebody.
And also, granted, someone could not use these films, but this video, what we, that we own, for the sake of making money.
No, no, they're not, although they're not copyrightable, they're also not plagiarizable. So in other words, they're owned by the town of New Milford, they're fair game for anybody, it's a public record under the Act, Freedom Information Act.
So every.
But they're not supposed to sell them, they can't sell them, it's not, it's not their property.
But what if they use them to increase the viewership of their, the viewership of their social media platform and increase the ad revenue?
Well, they can do that, they can put it on their, on their social, but I'm talking about chopping it up and selling.
So is admonishment the only course?
Right now it is, yeah, right now it is.
From the town's perspective?
From the town's perspective.
But aggrieved party.
You can't stifle free speech either.
But an aggrieved person, and I'm assuming that.
Has a private right of action.
Yeah, okay, so that person has the opportunity to, person-wise, to go to the person who's doing it.
Seek redress, and call the police, too, by the way, if it's, if it's harassment. Now, having said that, the town needs to be very careful, an admonition is one thing, but you can't act to stifle speech, because we're a governmental entity, and the First Amendment prohibition is, applies to us, doesn't apply to Kate Perry and Howard, doesn't apply to Kramer and Amsterdam, it applies to the town of New Milford. A governmental entity cannot stifle free speech, but you can admonish.
Lori, did you have any other questions?
So I have a question, excuse me, so if, if something is taken out of context and used on somebody else's, you know, social media platform, does this leave the town open to litigation?
That's a great question, and that's been, that's been handled before. The answer is no.
Go ahead.
But it does leave the individual liable for what's known as a false light lawsuit, placing somebody in a false light. When you take somebody out, something out of context, Professor Prosser used to call it the false light tour, that means you're placing them in a false light that was not true and is not really attributable to their, to their means or to what they meant, and that is actionable for, by the private person who who is subject to that. So when somebody does that, essentially, when somebody posts like that, it's at their peril.
So I have a question, so, so do we have something on the table right now, we're discussing specifically, all I heard is that, what, what action would I suppose, here is, here is what I'm linked towards to, as internet is a free, whatever, platform to, to express things, as much as I don't like sometimes, last November, or before that, Democratic House Committee posted as Republicans are walking with the, with the, with the Nazi salute, and that was okay all of a sudden.
That wasn't your image, that wasn't you.
Look, you don't, you don't want to discuss this with me, it was, it was, it was, it was very, very disturbing, it was not true, and it was depicting as a Nazi. Now you're saying, now, now the, the people that are saying now that something happened and there is no evidence, and all of a sudden that's not free, freedom of speech? I don't get that.
No, Sal, what I'm saying is, the videographer who gets all the video, all the meetings, right in his camera and his, and his property and his possession, goes home and chops them all up and makes great movies.
Again, it's.
So the, the question is, at what point is it the town's property that, if it's gonna be everybody, like, he's not going to YouTube and downloading all those pieces that he's using, right? He's actually.
But what, what piece specifically are we talking about? What piece?
Well, there's no way, he's, he's creating the edit, so anyway, I don't, this is too much.
What piece are we talking about?
So...
I don't think, yeah.
We're getting far afield here, and I respect your, your point of view, Hillary, without question. People take advantage of situations, and sadly, it is town's property that, but because we're public, we're, we're in a, between a rock and a hard place on that issue. You know, we find people are misusing it or attempting to make a profit from it. We will let council know. And the mayor, you have something else? Because this was just a discussion.
Yep.
Thank you.
I had...
I just want to say, I want it to be safe for people who have something to say, to want to come and say it.
The unfortunate part...
Well, talk to you, don't have to say.
Hang, hang on one second. The unfortunate part is it's a public forum, and, and, and people do find very difficult getting up in front of it, whether it was here to Borvet or, or somewhere where you're all videotaped. A lot of people just don't like being on, on television in any format, and I know I don't look good on it. I get an extra 20 pounds. So, but it's, it's unfortunate. But for the sake of wanting to speak in public in our, in this day and age, I think you're in a difficult situation.
Yeah.
There are many things that have turned into memes and things, and it's unfortunate.
Okay, so, all right. Any other, any other, I'd like to add something to the agenda, and that's before we go into executive session, I would like to have an update from Randy DeBella on what we publicly can talk, which is our appellate case with standard demo.
Are you, are you adding this to the agenda?
Your Honor, can I be joined by Attorney Tower?
Yep. So do I have a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
This is item 11F.
Thank you. Randy?
Mayor.
Attorney Tower?
I'm very pleased to report that the, the standard demolition litigation, that was a 22-day trial engineered by John Tower here, my partner on the right, and that we all lived and we all ate, slept, and, and dreamt about. All of our work and all of our, everything that we've done, that we, we got the judgments on, has been sustained by the appellate court.
Excellent.
In addition, the appellate court, and I will defer to John on this because I was, I was skeptical that this was going to happen, we had all calculated on our counterclaim. Well, I should say, we sued them, obviously, because they did, they walked off the job, essentially. They, they demobilized. They did a counterclaim against us for $2.3 million. In our claim against them, we claimed damages for the delay in getting it cleaned, liquidation, liquidated damages, means money that's actually certain per day, and other damages. The court, the trial court gave us $500,000 in liquidated damages minus what our retainage was, bringing about $489,000. My calculation was that we really were owed $1.4 million. John's is somewhat higher. His calculation was higher. John took that on appeal, even though we won the appeal of their case, when they, they filed an appeal saying they shouldn't have been, they shouldn't have gotten hit. We filed a counter appeal, well, the cross appeal. And John claimed we had, the trial court should have allowed more evidence on more damages, and damn it, he won it. The tri, the appellate court sustained the, the judgment on our behalf and reversed it to the extent that we still won, but we have to go back to see if we can get more money on a hearing in damages, which is a very limited proceeding. So I, with that, with that, I'll let John...
Why does John look happy?
I'm tired. Because he's got to collect it now. Was that in executive session?
This is fine. We'll go into executive session in detail.
Who was the judge for that trial?
The trial judge? Shaven. Dan Shaven.
And he stopped that trial to swear me into admission in the state of Connecticut.
Did he?
That's right. I think that's right.
That could have been the turning point.
That, that was, that's...
Great job, guys.
He probably said, oh, hey, but he didn't.
Yeah, that's...
In any event, the rest of it will, we, we need to reserve to executive session because we have to go back into court on the, the hearing in damages.
Great public opinion.
Great news.
Thank you, guys.
And, and...
Randy, this has been going on so long, you became a grandparent.
Okay, thank you very much.
More time.
Item 12, we'd like, I'd like to move that we go into executive session, and I'd like to ask attorneys DeBella and Tower to join us.
Second.
And our DPW director, Jack Healy. And I didn't know you were here, and Dan. The gang's all here.
We had a team.
Understood.
Are you going to both right now?
Just the one.
We're going into the first one, which is 12A.
No, then why are you inviting Dan in? Dan is for B.
Dan is part of the team.
All right.
I don't, I don't question when our town attorney says bring somebody.
I'm the same. I want to go for both if we are.
Is that true?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Mary Jane's off the table. Mary Jane?
Quedo.
Quedo. I regret to ask you this. Okay, so, motion to return to regular session has been motion seconded and voted on. No motions were taken, no made, or no votes were taken. So now it will move to this item. I would like to move that the council approve the proposed stipulation of withdrawal for the Candlewood Solar Project with such reasonable, with reasonable as deemed, by deemed, with reasonable changes as deemed appropriate by the town attorney.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
We're supposed to say that with a much deeper voice.